Council meeting. Of June twenty-third to order. Sharon, roll call, please.
Councilmember Alves.
Here.
Councilmember Warnikoff.
Here.
Councilmember Richards.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Here.
Mayor Derwin.
Here. Oral communications, this is the time in the evening. When anyone in the public may speak to something that is not on the agenda. You may speak once for up to three minutes. Would anyone, and we cannot take up your issue because it is not on the agenda. Would anyone like to speak under oral communications? Are there any hands raised, Sharon?
Yes, Rita Combs, comments, excuse me.
Rita.
Hi, good evening. I just want to say that in looking through the documents that were posted for tonight's meeting. The document constantly froze and I thought it was possibly my computer, but I've talked to several other people. And they were having the same issue and there was a similar issue to last week's documents that have been posted, so. Don't know who to check to see why, but could not open up the budget information at all. It completely froze and had to get reloaded. So people may not have had access before this meeting. For, you know, the full documents and the attachments because of that. But if that can be checked for future meetings, that would be helpful for the community. Thank you.
Thanks Rita. Jeremy, can you please deal with that and make sure that documents don't freeze up?
Yeah, we typically do through the chair. Check things prior. I hadn't had any issues, staff hadn't either. I'll reach out to Rita tomorrow and see what the issue was specifically.
Thank you. Are there any other hands raised, Sharon?
No, there's none.
Alrighty. Then we will move on to. A special recognition. I am so, in fact, let me put my words up. I, tonight I have the pleasure. Of recognizing Sandy Wong for her almost nine years. As Executive Director of C CAG. And her total of eighteen years working for C CAG. Before she steps down in retirement in early August. First, a little about C CAG or the San Mateo County City-County Association of Governments. Perhaps the most powerful, productive, collaborative, and democratic public agency in San Mateo. County you have never heard of. C CAG is a COG. A COG is a council of government body. That represents members of local government, generally cities and county. That are working together to provide collaborative planning and coordination on issues of mutual concern. That cross jurisdictional boundaries. There are many COGS in California, including. B CAG. In Butte County, Ambag in Monterey County. H CAG in Humboldt County, T CAG in Tahoe County, C VAG in Coachella Valley. Sandag in San Diego County, and I think we even have. Southern California CAG, what is that one, SCAG?
SCAG.
Referred to tonight. C CAG was originally created San Mateo County CMA or Congestion Management Agency. But it involved beyond transportation to include stormwater slash green infrastructure. Airport land use, climate change, housing. Sandy came to C CAG in two thousand and three from Caltrans. With an undergraduate degree and MS degree in civil engineering. She told me that she didn't want to be a geek, so she went back to school to get an MBA. I thought it was interesting that she thought if she had an MBA, she would no longer be a geek. In two thousand and twelve, after an extensive search to replace her predecessor, Rich Napier. Who decided to retire, she was chosen to be the Executive Director. Mind you, even in two thousand and twelve, the world of transportation was still a man's world. And quiet, unassuming Sandy, a woman of color, was not the stereotypical choice in the field. Of the many brilliant hopefuls vying for the job, mostly men, including our very own town manager. Under Sandy's leadership supervised by a sometimes raucous twenty-one member board. And overseeing twelve committees, a twenty-two million dollar budget, major government plans. In five program areas, some of the most significant programs in agency in the county were born. Peninsula Clean Energy came from a discussion at the C CAG RMCP Committee, that's Resource Management Climate Protection. When Supervisor Dave Pine was a member. The Fizzler District, that's the Flood and Sea Level Rise Resiliency. District also had its inception. On C CAG, when a small ad hoc committee was formed. To explore the idea boosted by an event sponsored by C CAG when Congresswoman Jackie Speer challenged us. To create our own water agency so that we could compete for the big dollars for the much needed big project. The idea for the one-on-one express lanes project, the first leg of which will open in the fall, came from C CAG. The Stormwater Program under Matt Fabry is perhaps the most innovative in the state. Transportation, still the mainstay of the agency, can take credit for so many improvements, including new interchange. This is while Sandy was Director. Including new interchanges on one-on-one, new bike pad projects in cities throughout the county, and a robust. Safe routes to school program, a partnership with County Ed. When PG&E used to give away money before their gross negligence caused the fatal gas explosion in San Bruno. They funded C CAG's Energy Watch Program that retrofitted and improved efficiency for tons of commercial applications. Right now, C CAG's RICAP's program works with cities, including Portola Valley. On their climate action plans. I could go on and on about the breadth and depth of C CAG understanding. Steady, exquisitely competent leadership. When I chaired C CAG, I used to call her a quiet giant, and that she is. Capable of the most brilliant strategic thinking I have ever witnessed. Unsettling formidable male leaders with her intellect. We worked together through the exceedingly challenging political piece of deciding who would own and operate the one-on-one express lanes. And to this day, working with our co-sponsor, the San Mateo County Transportation Authority. Continues to be an ongoing chess game. Sandy, always the smartest player in the room. Thank you Sandy for your visionary, intelligent leadership. Your openness to taking on new programs that benefit county residents. Your encyclopedic technical knowledge of all C CAG subject areas. Your ability to work with difficult election, elected officials who test the boundaries of human patience. Your genius at finding solutions and compromises to intractable problems. And your unexpected dry sense of humor that I have been privileged to witness. On behalf of my council colleagues and the Portola Valley community. We thank you for eighteen years of public service to San Mateo County. Shaping C CAG to be the premier county agency where council members from Daly City to Atherton. East Palo Alto to Portola Valley, South San Francisco to Hillsborough. And Half Moon Bay to Menlo Park all sit down together at the same table. Voicing disparate opinions about the most important issues of the day. But finally, working together to arrive at solutions that truly serve the greater good. Thank you Sandy. I hope Sandy's here and I didn't just send that into the ether. Sandy, are you here? If you are.
I am.
There you are, yeah, I see you.
Thank you, Mayor, may I say a few words?
Yes, please do.
Thank you, thank you so much, and I'm really touched by your speech and loved it and I'm gonna cry. Thank you so much for your kind words. Mayor and council members. Really appreciate. All the kind words. I do want to. Thank the town of Portola Valley for your participation. On countywide matters that are under C CAG's purview. Including transportation, stormwater, housing, climate, and so on. I think the town of Portola Valley. While it may be a small town, but it has made a huge contribution to countywide matters. Through your representation on C CAG. And I truly, truly enjoyed and appreciate working under the leadership of. Mayor Derwin as the C CAG Chair Person. During the years when she was Chair, we have accomplished a lot and. I think Mary Ann, you gave a really good summary of that. Particularly, I want to reiterate the working to establish the San Mateo County. Flood and Sea Level Rise Resilience District. Now known as One Shore Line. As well as the San Mateo County Express Lanes Joint Powers Agency. So all the works that we've done and I really enjoy working with you on C CAG. And I would also like to thank Town Manager Jeremy for his ongoing support to C CAG matters. Including serving on the Administrator's Advisory Committee and amongst other things. So without taking too much of your time, I just want to thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you Sandy. Jeremy, do you want to say a few words since you work, also work closely with Sandy?
Just that I'm gonna miss you. If you're ever looking. For some, some stuff post-retirement, I hope you know where to find us. Just thoroughly enjoyed working with you over the years and. Appreciated all the advice, suggestions, thoughts you had about all the different programs and initiatives that the town was. Working on with, with C CAG. You'll be really missed. You've been quite a leader for the organization and everything that Mary Ann said, I couldn't agree more, so. Love you and miss you already.
Thanks Jeremy.
Thank you.
Okay. Alrighty. Onto the consent agenda. Alrighty, the consent agenda. The public may also speak to any item on the consent agenda. Again, you can speak for up to three minutes for each item. However, only the council can pull something from the consent agenda. Jeremy, is your hand up?
Yes, my hand is up. I did. Want to identify. Looks like one of the two items is still on there. Item number eight. Did not. Get to us in time for full publication of the packet, so we'll be continuing that item to. July fourth.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Right, would it, only the council can pull an item, however, the public may speak about any item. Sharon, would anyone from the public wish to speak? Do you see any hands?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, would any of my colleagues wish to pull something? Jeff.
Minutes, number two.
Number two, Craig.
Number eight, just to formally have a council member pull that one.
Okay, I wanted to pull, which is the one, number five. Okay, are there any other items to pull? All right, then can I have a motion to approve? Three, four, six, seven, nine.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Seconded by Craig, discussion. Sharon, roll call.
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Councilmember Warnikoff. Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi. Item number two.
Yeah, read page twenty-two. Very first, first complete sentence. Says, it reads Palo Alto is a stakeholder in the San Francisco Airport. That's, that's my opinion. I just want to make it clear that I, you know, that's, that was an opinion of mine. It's not, it's sort of presented as a fact there. I wanted to correct that. Also, the next sentence reads he's on the subcommittee. I volunteered for the subcommittee, has not formally been appointed yet. I just wanted to clarify those two things, but the rest of it, I believe is. Is, is accurate as written. That was my one change.
Okay, does anyone else have any edits to the minutes? Okay, then do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended by Jeff?
I will so move.
Thank you, is there a second? Okay, Craig. All right. Discussion. Roll call, please Sharon.
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Councilmember Hughes.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Oh, you already did me, I think you missed.
I'm sorry. Who did I miss? The mayor, sorry. Councilmember Warnikoff.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi. Item number five, I just wanted to state for the record. That we did address the concerns voiced by some community members about Anne. And Al still serving on the ad hoc Housing Element Committee. Both the ASCC and the Planning Commission discussed it. Nobody else stepped up and they both felt that Anne and. Al were perfect for the job. That's all I wanted to say. Craig?
Yeah, I think there was one comment at the Planning Commission discussion of. Continued to have Anne as their, one of their two representatives. That I thought was. Summarized, summarized the issue quite well, which is why should the two of them have to get divorced to both be able to serve the town in this capacity, so I think that. They're, both, both committees ended up deciding to continue, having considered the issue that it was entirely appropriate for the two members, and I agree with that decision.
Thanks, I was just happy to see that it was brought up and they did discuss it and they came to a decision. So may I have a motion to approve number five?
So moved.
Craig, second? Jeff?
Second.
Were you just raising your hand?
It was both, all second.
Okay. Discussion, all those in favor, excuse me, roll call, we're not back in person yet.
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Councilmember Warnikoff.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi. Number eight, Craig.
Number eight was really to pull it just to continue to our next meeting. Rather than to approve it at this one, since there was no information attached to the item.
Okay, do we need a motion for that, Cara?
Um, since it's been pulled, you might as well do a motion.
I would move to continue to our next meeting.
Second? Okay, John seconded, discussion. Roll call, please Sharon.
Councilmember Alves.
Hi.
Councilmember Warnikoff.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Derwin.
Hi. Moving on to the regular agenda, item number ten is a public hearing. Adoption of the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget and appropriations limit. Cindy, are you going to take this or Jeremy?
I will be taking this.
Alrighty.
You? Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
You? Good evening, Mayor Derwin. Members of the council and the public, my name is Cindy Rhodes, Finance Director with the town. Tonight, we're here to present the final proposed fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two budget. We have a brief overview here of what we'll be reviewing tonight. We'll have the numbers for the final proposed budget. A review of some revenues and expenditures. Review some items to monitor and consider for the future. Changes that happened from the previous meeting held on the ninth. And then open it up for questions and comments at the end. In looking at our fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two proposed budget. We do have a strong relationship to our council priorities. The budget is a balanced budget, but there continues to be a shrinking delta between revenues and expenditures. We do have a, as a part of the budget, a modest capital improvement program. And it's, it's modest, not by the dollar amount, but modest in the number of projects. In relation to what we've presented in the past. These projects do reflect the town staff capacity. Here we have a summary view of both sources and requirements for all funds in the proposed budget. This summary will actually outlines here our sources and requirements. Our total revenues of eight point four million. And then below you can see our fund balance. Necessary to cover operational and our capital. Operating transfers in, and so total sources, ten point four million. On the left, on the right-hand side, we have here the. Requirements by categories here, total gross appropriations, seven point nine million. With our operating transfers out, and that includes our capital and a transfer to our gas tax fund. To ensure that the gas tax fund is not in the negative. With our total requirements of ten point four million. I do want to highlight that there is a net operating surplus of eighty-three thousand two eighty-eight. And a similar view, but this is just relating to general fund. We have our sources here, total revenues of six point one. With requirements of six point, or six thousand, six million, excuse me, six million sixty thousand. On our requirement side. And here we're also reflecting the net operating surplus of eighty-three thousand. Just a quick summary of our revenues and expenditures relating to general fund. There is a steady growth of property tax. We currently. Included a growth of five point two percent for our property tax revenue. We have seen that. Increasing. Over the past few years and actually more, more recently as well. We, we could go up higher. Higher growth, even up to six percent as many other cities have been calculating their, their property tax growth. We are taking a conservative approach as we have in the past. As the, we do want to count for. Some VLF shortfall that we, we, we don't. Necessarily know at this point if we will receive the full funding of our VLF. So we are taking a conservative approach and listing this as just five point two percent. We have seen some increases in our sales tax. And some changes in other revenues such as UUT. That is also a large source of revenue for the town. But we have seen some, some changes as some of these utilities have, have changed due to consumption. As far as our expenditures go, we have seen an increase in our employee services and benefits. This is mainly related to an additional position that we've added under the Building and Planning Department, which is fully funded. This. Position was defunded in the current year budget, but we have added this position back. And it's also fully funding the position for the finance analyst. Was only partially funded for the current fiscal year. We have seen some increases also in public safety and this would include. Our sheriff's contract as well as. Fire services as well. Here we'll be reviewing some items to monitor and consider in the long term. In relation to our revenues. We, we do want to continue seeing some additional revenue coming in. To support our operational needs, and this is related to the, the delta that we see shrinking in our operational. Sources. We're continuing to also monitor the impact of our excess ERAF and VLF shortfall. This is. An issue that is continuing to be discussed through, with the county and also Department of Finance. There's also, I, an additional item to monitor are the. Changes in franchise fees and UUT consumption. We have seen some decline in consumption related to the telephone. Telephone franchise fees. And cable as well. Increased wildfire support. So this, this is a, a program that is increasing in the amount of support necessary. So we want to closely monitor this item. To make sure that we have enough support to cover it. Also related to our town facilities, we are now going into twelve-plus years of the town center. Which is increasingly needing more service and, and maintenance to, to, to the entire facility. Additionally, are the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA. Is a, a plan that provides three hundred and fifty billion for eligible state, local, territorial, and tribal governments. To mitigate the fiscal effects of the COVID nineteen emergency. Within this plan, there's twenty billion going to non-entitlement units or any use of local government. This refers to small cities under fifty thousand residents. The non-entitlement units will receive funds directly from the state. Funds must be obligated by December of twenty twenty-four and expended by December of twenty twenty-six. The first disbursement is expected to be received in mid to late July. With the second disbursement about twelve months later. Originally, the allocate, the allocated amount for the town of Portola Valley was approximately eight, eight hundred and sixty thousand. We just recently received an update to that allocation for the town. Which is now increased to one million ninety-two thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars. Today was actually the, the deadline to submit the certification. So that has been completed and submitted to the Department of Finance. Over the next few months, we will be required to report to the US Treasury on these expenditures. As they are related to the COVID nineteen emergency. There, we have actually reviewed some of the expenditures that are included in the budget, which may be eligible. Expenditures under the ARPA plan. And looking forward to our fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two calendar. We'll have continued discussions on the ARPA plan. And, and continue to discuss. Projects that, that we could include. There will be a budget revision upcoming in September to include some of these items as well as. Updates to our revenues, projected revenues and possible expenditures. And we will be including actuals for the current fiscal year following the audit. Upcoming, there will also be quarterly budget monitoring meetings with the Finance Committee beginning in October. And towards the end of the second quarter, we'll have a continued discussion on staffing. Most. Most notably to the Public Works Department. Following the council meeting two weeks ago on June ninth. There were a few changes. Directly related to some of the public comments and feedback that we received, both from the public and from council. So we have updated the title to Final Proposed Fiscal Year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. There are some updates to the pie charts included in the budget related to sources and requirements. We have added. Additional fiscal years to review year-over-year changes. And we have added. And then a separate section, an appendix section. That actually includes a glossary of budget terms related to some acronyms and just budget related. Verbage that's used throughout the budget. We also have fund balance FAQs included as well as the town's minimum fund balance policy and investment policy. We've also included some corrections to our actuals for fiscal year twenty eighteen and nineteen, as well as nineteen and twenty. No changes to the total line numbers. It's more of the allocation related to some of these line items. We are still working out of two finance systems. So making sure that we're allocating the. Numbers to the proper, proper budget units was, was increasingly important this, this time around. So we have made those corrections and have updated the budget related to these fiscal years. And at this time, I will open it up for any questions or comments.
Mayor Derwin, if I may, the, the second section of the. Of the item tonight is the annual appropriation limit, game limit. I'll just briefly state the purpose of this exercise. This was a result of California Proposition Four, which was passed in nineteen seventy nine, I believe. It was voted in by the people of California to limit growth in state and local government through expenditures. So every year we go through a calculation to ensure that that's happening. And as we find every year, we are. Meeting the requirements of Prop Four. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Are there questions of the council to Cindy? Sarah?
I don't have a question. I just want to say thank you. I think this turn and the improvements you guys have made since the last meeting are so awesome. So thank you. One of the things that we've been talking about in the Finance Subcommittee is kind of how do each year you guys iterate to improve upon the reporting and the information for the public. And I think if you look at last year, last year versus this year, there's been huge strides. I love everything that you guys added to the appendix and hopefully everybody, you know, who is interested in the budget finds it informative. By the way, I was using the budget a lot today reviewing materials. I didn't have any glitches, just, just so you know, Jeremy. So thank you. The only request I was going to have is I, I think this deck is really helpful. And I was wondering if when you guys post the budget to the website, if you can include this deck. Because otherwise that gets buried in minutes and people, you know, lose the value of that. And there's a lot of good information in there, including things like the issues to monitor for the long term and whatnot. So I think it's worthwhile to try and elevate this deck. So it's accessible right alongside the budget for those who are looking. So thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Craig?
Yes, I have a question on the appropriations limit. Is the ARP money going to be subject to the appropriations limit? It is money that's coming from taxes, but they're federal, not state taxes. I don't know if that makes it exempt.
We're still waiting to hear back on some more. There's a few items that we're still waiting to, to get more clarification on. So that, that is actually one of the items. So what, what, once we do hear back, we'll, we'll report back with that information.
That could be a huge impediment. Otherwise, we're, we're pretty close to our appropriations limit. If we have, try and spend a million dollars.
It would, it would be shocking.
All hell, all hell would break loose across California.
It would be shocking to me if they did ultimately include it. So I think we're ninety nine point nine nine percent sure this wouldn't have any issue whatsoever. But I think Cindy's right to have just an air of caution around this because, you know, it remains to be seen whether the federal government understands we have things like game limits and, and otherwise. But I, I'm, I'm fairly confident it won't be, but Cindy's right to have a note.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. That was my only comment. I think everything else was nicely answered in the packet.
Any questions from John or Jeff?
I have no comments. I just, no questions. Just to thank you again, Cindy. It's a great job. Really, every leader, like I always say, it seems to be getting better and better. So thank you so much.
Yeah, well, thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Jeremy, the other staff that helped with this. Thank you, Sarah and Craig, I think, for, for all the work you did with Finance Committee and the Finance Committee. It is, it is a much better document than, you know, given where we were nine years ago, when I first looked at these things. It is, it is light years ahead of where we are, where then. So thank you all.
Alrighty, this is a public hearing, so I don't have a gavel, so I brought my spoon. So I'm going to open the public hearing. Sharon, is there anyone in the community, public who has a hand raised and would like to speak?
There are no hands raised. We have one now.
All right.
Ann Copsill?
Ann Copsill, Ann.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's a mistake. I must have hit something wrong. I have no comments.
It's nice to hear from you.
Hello. That's all. Hi.
Shoot.
Christie Corley?
Alrighty, Christie Corley.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for doing the budget and looks like a lot of work. I just am wondering one item on wildfire equipment. I know we share a chipper with Woodside and we get the chipper two days a week. And Woodside gets it three days or maybe it's shared by more. Is there any thought or items in the budget to purchase our own chipper? So we have it available to us all week long during fire season?
Through the chair, if you'd like me to answer that question.
Please answer that.
We've had some internal discussions about it, the, the amount of time that we receive the chipper. Does fully support the current program levels related to the vegetation management right of way. Program. So I think we're comfortable right now with that. Certainly, if there's a future need, we would come back to council. Should we expand the program or, or needed for other uses, but right now it, it serves the purposes of the budgeted item. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Jeremy.
Thank you.
Are there any other hands raised?
There are no additional hands raised this time.
Okay, then. Just close the public hearing and it's back to the council. For comments, I mean, I think there were a lot of comments earlier. Are there any additional comments? Would someone like to make a motion to approve? Do we need just one motion here or do we need two? Cara? There's a.
You can split it up and do the two resolutions.
Okay, so there's resolution, the first resolution, which is adopting the operating and capital budgets for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Who would like to make that motion? Sarah?
Make a motion.
And who would like to second it? Craig? And is there a discussion? All right, roll call Sharon.
Councilmember Alves?
Aye.
Councilmember Warnikoff?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hughes?
Aye.
Mayor Derwin?
Aye. And then the second resolution, adoption of a resolution of the town of Portola Valley determining and establishing the appropriations limit for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Who would like to make that motion? Craig?
Make a motion.
Is there a second? Sarah? Roll call Sharon.
Councilmember Alves?
Aye.
Councilmember Warnikoff?
Aye.
Councilmember Richards?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Hughes?
Aye.
Mayor Derwin?
Aye. Yay. Aren't you happy, Jeremy and Cindy, that we approved the budget? It's all I hear about, all I hear about budget, budget, budget. Yes, it is the best budget. I've been here the longest. This is the best budget. Even I found it easy to, to use. So really good work.
And as a reminder to the public, we will be having a few conversations in the summer, late summer related to the budget. We're looking at opportunities for the council to discuss the use of the American Rescue Plan Act monies. That includes discussions related to town use, but also business and individual use. There's a variety of opportunities there. The second is that the September revision process, which is new to the town. As people probably saw tonight, that the, the budget's officially called the final proposed budget. It will continue to be a proposed budget through September with the final adoption as a, as a, a final in September. The reason that we're doing that is that it allows us to bring accurate numbers related to expenditures and revenue in the twenty twenty one budget year. There's additional items that we're not ready for consideration on both sides of the ledger that we want to bring forward that we're working on this summer. It's a pretty standard process that municipalities use. So we're excited about having those conversations with you at those, at those times.
And we look forward to those conversations as well. Moving on to item number eleven, this is also a public hearing recommended by the Planning and Building Director and the Town Attorney. First reading of ordinance amending section eighteen thirty six oh four. Accessory uses of chapter eighteen thirty six relating to accessory dwelling units, ADUs. Laura, are you going to start this one off?
Cara will.
For Cara, Craig?
So I, I will, I will start this off. Cara Silver, Town Attorney. Laura Russell, Planning Director is also here, as is Dylan Parker, who assisted with this ordinance. I'm going to share my screen now. Do you see the screen? It's just not in presentation mode. Is that?
We can see it.
You can see it?
Yep.
If you could get it in presentation mode, it might look a lot bigger. Yeah.
Sort of tiny.
See here.
All right.
Yes.
If you, if you go back and go to the top ribbon on the slide, on the screen you were on before. You see the icon that has a play symbol and it looks like a old school presentation. Things you used to have at school when you were doing the presentations. Yeah, if you click on that, that one.
Okay, thank you. Great. Thank you, Dylan. Okay, so I'm, I'm going to present the ADU ordinance update. And this update was. Was necessitated by the amendments to state legislation that were enacted in twenty nineteen. And that went into effect January one, twenty twenty. So in terms of our agenda, we're going to talk about the need for this current update. We're going to talk about the Planning Commission review. We're going to hit on just some of the key issues that this ordinance addresses and then talk about next steps. So first of all, as I mentioned, the, this particular ordinance was adopted by the town council in twenty nineteen. So it's a, a very, a fairly recent update. We knew that in twenty nineteen, when this was being reviewed, that there were some pending legislation. That addressed ADUs. And so at that time, we did take into account some of the provisions that we thought would be enacted. But there were other revisions that were enacted after our local update that still need to be addressed. So with this piece of legislation, we always start out by saying that. Because there were multiple bills that had to be reconciled, it is a very complex set of, of bills. It's a complex statute. It has several provisions which are internally inconsistent and it contains large gaps. It all, what we also like to inform people is that the legislation itself states. That if the town does not adopt an implementing ordinance by January one, twenty twenty. Then the state law applies until that time that the town adopts a local implementing ordinance. So currently, at a staff level, we have actually been adhering to the state law rather than the local ordinance. As required to do so by the, by the state law. Once the council adopts this local ordinance, we will then have the ability to apply additional local controls to the processing of ADUs. So a brief introduction of what the twenty twenty state law amendments consist of. First of all, they introduce a new category of accessory dwelling units. And that is a category that can take place in multifamily developments. That will probably not have extreme impact in Portola Valley. But, you know, certainly in the next housing element cycle, there may be some additional multifamily districts. And there are currently some multifamily projects that could take advantage of this new addition. Secondly, the concept of junior accessory dwelling units was introduced. This was something that existed previously under state law, but it was optional. Now there is a mandatory requirement to permit junior accessory dwelling units. These are units that are typically under five hundred square feet. They typically involve a bedroom conversion with a kitchen or a kitchenette. The other element of state law is that the number of required ADUs has been increased. The towns, towns and counties are now required to permit one ADU and one junior ADU if requested. The most critical impact that we have identified is the setback requirements. There is now a default setback of four feet for side and rear setbacks under state law. And in Portola Valley with a larger setbacks of twenty to twenty five feet, that will certainly be an impact. The legislation also got rid of the owner occupancy requirements. This will not have a huge impact on Portola Valley as the council did waive those requirements in the twenty nineteen update. The processing time has been significantly decreased. It used to be a hundred and twenty days from the filing of a completed application. Now it's sixty days. And then there is a new introduction of what we are calling state mandated accessory dwelling units. Those are three categories of ADUs that are permitted by right under state law. And we will get into that later. In terms of the Planning Commission's review of the ordinance, they had three public hearings on this matter. They also formed a subcommittee to review specific ordinance language. And the subcommittee had additional meetings as well. The primary focus of the Planning Commission was to discuss sort of the pros and cons of adopting these new state implemented. Or state required regulations. They also spent a lot of time discussing the fire safety and geological safety exception that was proposed by staff. And they, the Planning Commission expanded that safety exception and we will get into the details on that later. They also discussed a carrot and stick approach to address the issue of setbacks. And then they formed the subcommittee and we reviewed the specific language of the proposed ordinance. So turning to the key issues, as I mentioned, there are some new ADU types that are now part of the state law. The first is the junior accessory dwelling unit. This is typically going to be a bedroom conversion. But the new state law expanded this to include any conversion of any livable space in a single family home. So it could be a family room or a study conversion as well. It must have some type of bathroom facility, although it could be shared. It must have some type of bathroom facility, although it could be shared restroom facility with the main house. Also, there is an option for cities to either require or not require kitchens. Staff and the Planning Commission are both recommending that a kitchen requirement be added to the ordinance and the reason for that is that then once the junior ADU is incorporated into the building, there are the main residents, it can be counted for arena purposes because it has a kitchen. The second element of the state law is the multifamily ADUs and we have incorporated a definition of multifamily ADUs. And we, we will discuss later where those, where those will typically be constructed and how a multifamily ADU is actually created. And then third, we have three new categories of state required by right accessory dwelling units. So going over those, those three categories that the town must permit by right. The first category is a newly constructed ADU of up to 800 square feet, 16 feet in height with four foot side and rear setbacks. That must be permitted by the town if an application comes in. The second category is a conversion of either existing space within a single family building or conversion of an existing accessory building on the property. And then the third category is the multifamily ADU that I mentioned previously. There are two options for creating a multifamily ADU. And then in terms of the by right categories, you have the option of picking one of these options. The first option is to convert interior space within a multifamily building that is currently non-livable space. So typically that involves a, a large parking garage, a attic space, HVAC space in a condominium. It could include a rec room or those types of facilities, common area facilities. And the, the law requires that at least 25% of the units be permitted to convert some of this non-livable space to ADU use. The second option is to, if the, if the property, the multifamily property allows for it to construct two detached units in the multi, on the multifamily lot. And again, if somebody is requesting to develop these by right, they are required to select one of these options. So the primary issue, as I mentioned, that was discussed by the Planning Commission was the need to address fire safety issues. Obviously that's an important issue in Portola Valley. So the Planning Commission came up with a multi-pronged approach to address fire safety issues. The first, the first method that of a sort of a safety precaution was to recognize that all current local setbacks dealing with health and safety must be recognized. So we currently have geologic setbacks. We have some, we have some fire safety setbacks. We have setbacks relating to the, the need to, for vehicles to, some fire safety vehicles to enter properties. And so if there is any applicable parcel setback related to health and safety, the local ordinance provides that the applicant must comply with those setbacks. The second method addressed the existing restricted area location exception that we have in our existing ordinance. And if you recall, that restriction relates to areas that are served by the ingress and egress by a single point of access. And secondly, the second criteria is that that street that is serving as the primary access point must be less than 18 feet in width. And so, and in, taking into account those two issues, the Planning Commission last year in consultation with the fire district found that those were really the areas in town that were most likely to be impacted by fire safety issues because of the evacuation problems associated with those two geographical or two, two physical limitations. So we focused our, our thinking on, on those areas. We're calling it the restricted area location and that's where the regulations limiting ADUs are the strongest. This also relates, this area also relates to the very high fire hazard area in town and it is, it's not, it's not exact, but it's roughly equivalent. It's the Highlands area is where you see these two factors come into play and that's also the area that has been designated by Cal Fire as the very high, high fire severity zone. So in that area, in that restricted area, the Planning Commission recommended a prohibition on ADUs on the smaller parcels and the smaller parcels were defined as parcels less than one acre. So we have carried forward that recommendation in the proposed ordinance. So there will be no ADUs allowed in the restricted area if the parcel is less than one, one acre. If the parcel is greater than one acre, but it's located in this restricted area, then the ADU must comply with the local setbacks. So in other, other words, they do not have the ability to take advantage of that four foot default setback that is authorized under state law. State law also has a provision that allows agencies to either prohibit or regulate in areas of health and safety. And so we think that this regulation clearly falls within that state law authorization. And then third, the, the Planning Commission also recommended that there be a carrot and stick approach to incentivizing and the, the compliance with local setbacks and recognition of the fact that fire safety issues are exacerbated by properties that are close together. And so we'll go into the carrot and stick approach a bit later. And then the final element of the fire safety discussion and proposal that the Planning Commission is moving forward is the development of a fire safety checklist. And that will be filled out by all ADUs applicants that do not comply with the local setbacks. The checklist will consist of the best practices in the areas of construction methods and materials, defensible space and vegetation management. The checklist will be developed by the fire marshal and the Planning and Building Director. It will then be presented to the Planning Commission for review and recommendation to the council. And then ultimately, the plant, the council will approve this checklist of best practices and all ADUs within Portola Valley that do not comply with the local setbacks will be required to comply with the fire safety checklist items. So we think that this fourfold fire safety approach has several advantages. The first advantage with respect to using the checklist is that it starts to preview the home hardening best practices that we have been working on it at a staff and committee level that we do plan to bring forward in the next couple of months. But it will, the checklist will incorporate many of those provisions that you will start to see in a permanent ordinance. It also allows residents to have a dialogue at an early stage of the project about fire safety. We expect this dialogue to occur primarily with town staff, but we will also expect to have some kind of dialogue with the fire marshal as well with respect to those applicants that are, are resistant of some of these checklist items. The checklist also meets the objective standards that are required with ADU review. The ADU state law is moving towards a ministerial review and expects that most ADU applications will be reviewed using objective standards in the ministerial process that's administered by staff rather than development review committees. It will apply townwide. This, and I'm referring to the checklist at this point, it will, it will apply townwide. It will not be limited to just the very high fire severity zones. And it will take into account particular circumstances of each, of each parcel and it will be a living document. So as best practices evolve, we would expect to, to update the checklist. The one disadvantage of, of this approach is that it does require that the ordinance, that the, the regulations are contained in different places. And so it's a little bit more difficult to implement and it will require some additional staff work to walk through this checklist with applicants. Turning now to the setback issue, which is another component of the fire safety issue, although it also is just a, a privacy issue that, that many cities are, are struggling with in terms of the, the four foot default setback standards. So we have developed what we are referring to as a carrot and stick approach here to implementing setbacks. What we are hoping to do is with our carrots is to encourage compliance with local setbacks by providing the incentive of creating a larger unit. If you comply with local setbacks, you will be permitted to build up to 1,200 square feet on parcels of less than 3.5 acres and up to 1,500 square feet on parcels larger than 3.5 acres. You still will not be able to go over the AMFA, the total AMFA for the site. So there is that guardrail in place. Secondly, height has been a concern with, with ADUs that are within the local setbacks. It, you know, higher height can pose more privacy issues and can pose some shadow issues. And so if you comply with the local setbacks, then you will be permitted to build higher 18 feet vertical and 24 maximum. Then the Planning Commission also spent a lot of time on the disincentives for building within the local setbacks. We, we are recommending a size limitation for any unit that is built within the local setback. This size limitation would be the maximum that's permitted by state law, 850 for up to a one bedroom and 1,000 for two bedrooms or more. The height would also be limited by the state maximum height of 16 feet. We would also require some additional screening and that's for privacy. The, the, the type of screening would have to be fire safe landscaping and that would be codified in the, in the fire safety checklist. There would be a list of acceptable landscaping. Again, addressing the privacy issues, there would be no egress windows allowed in any of the sides that are encroaching into the local setbacks. Windows and skylights would have to be above nine feet on the sides located in the local setbacks and the windows would have to be obscured and that the obscured would be a type of glass material that is obscured. That, and that would also be a, considered a disincentive. In terms of amenities, we're recommending that most amenities be restricted for ADUs encroaching into the setbacks. So there would be no second driveway allowed, no basement allowed, no improvements such as patios, decks, trellises, saunas, et cetera. Finally, the, we have also incorporated some of the state law requirements relating to administration of the ordinance. As I mentioned before, we have incorporated the priority of, of ministerial review and we have shifted more of the review to a ministerial process that will be taken up at a staff level as opposed to the ASCC or Planning Commission. And then the processing time has been reduced from 120 to 60 days. We spent some time with the application requirements. There is an opportunity to have third party reviews such as reviews in connection with sewer and septic and fire that can take place before the application is filed. And that will then help with the processing time. So by the time it comes to staff, it's ready to, to be planned checked. And then the other application requirement that the Planning Commission suggested was to notify all neighbors of the application being filed. This is not some, a practice that we typically do with ministerial permits. We don't like to set a false expectation that there is an appeal right for, for residents. However, the Planning Commission thought that it was important and in line with the neighbor to neighbor communication ethos that we have in Portola Valley. So we have incorporated this requirement into the application process. And then finally, there was some discussion at the Planning Commission about the Planning Director's authority to interpret the ordinance. There was some concern about the Planning Director's ability to do that. And so we changed that authority and to a, instead giving the Planning Director the authority to adopt guidelines to implement the ordinance. This is a rather new concept for the planning department and for the town, I think in general, as we're getting larger, that, you know, there's going to be more, more action taken at a staff level as opposed to a committee or a, a town council level. And that's just needed for general efficiency. We thought also in this particular content, context where the state law is complicated and confusing and ambiguous, that it was certainly important to have the ability to quickly adopt guidelines as new, you know, guy, guidance came out from the state or HCD, et cetera. So we are recommending that the Planning Director have this authority. Some key issues that the council may want to talk about tonight. I wanted to flag the, the Planning and Building Director Authority issue because that is something that the Planning Commission spent a fair amount of time discussing and it is a shift for our practices and I thought it would be good to get council input on this particular issue. There was also an issue that the Planning Commission recommended that the, any ADU that's the, any ADU that's being proposed in close proximity to a trail be referred to the trails committee for consultation. We would also like to get the council's input on this particular recommendation. We have some reservations about it. We think that it's going to be difficult to do within the 60 day window and that it does create a new process that is not codified in our code and without specific guidance for what the trails committee should review and whether the trails committee is the appropriate committee to review sort of fire proximity issues. We thought that that would be an important issue for the council to weigh in on as well. And then finally, the town, the planning commission recommended that this particular ordinance sunset in three years. The reasoning for that was that this is, this represents some big changes, especially in terms of the four foot setback. And the expansion of the number of possible ADUs in the town. And the planning commission therefore felt it was important that we have some kind of check and balance on the, on the ordinance and thought that the appropriate way to do that was through a sunset provision. Staff is not recommending a sunset provision. We think that it is important to, to evaluate those issues certainly, and we do plan on evaluating them. We think that it's very likely that these issues will also come up in the housing element and that there will be new amendments to state law. And as we have in the past, we will bring those forward at the appropriate time. And we think that it is more appropriate to bring forward amendments when they are needed as opposed to having an automatic three year sunset provision that would reallocate resources in a way that the council may not desire. So those are the, the discussion topics that we have flagged for the, the council in addition to the other topics, key topics that we raised in, in our presentation. So in terms of next steps, the, this is an ordinance, so it requires a first reading and a second reading. And then it would go into effect 30 days after the council's adoption after the second reading. Because this is an accessory dwelling unit ordinance, there is a new requirement that HCD, which is the Housing and Community Development Department, approve this ordinance. The HCD is taking a, an aggressive stance on ADU ordinances and they do see ADU ordinances as an important way to provide affordable housing in particular community, particularly in communities that do not have multifamily neighborhoods. So they will take a look at that. The other issue that, that we have flagged for the council in terms of next steps is that we would need to develop this fire safety checklist and send that to the planning commission for review and then agendize that for town council discussion. And then finally, we do want to reiterate that we do think that it's likely that there, that the issue of accessory dwelling units will come up in connection with the housing element and the safety element update that we are embarking on. And so this is not the last time you will see this issue. We, we do expect it to come up in, in connection with these two initiatives as well. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions, council. Craig?
Um, yes, I have a couple. Could you go back to the last slide actually, because I think there, to that slide? So one question is, how quickly would the fire safety checklist be developed and what happens in the meantime? So if we pass this ordinance approved by HCD, we haven't developed the fire safety checklist and somebody comes in with a proposed ADU, what happens? Is their application not complete without the checklist?
Well, there are different ways of, of setting it up. We, we could, um, we couldn't refuse to process an application because we don't have all of the application in place. We couldn't do that, but we could very quickly get this to the planning commission and, and town council. The planning commission recommended that it be done quickly, within 45 days. Laura and I have started having conversations with the fire marshal, so we don't expect it to take a long time. So I, I think that that's really the, the way it will roll out. Right now, as, as I mentioned, we are following state law in any event. So if you wanted to, you could give us the direction to, you know, develop the checklist even before the, the second reading. And so maybe we could, you know, speed the process up that way as well.
Okay. And then the second question I have is, is to what degree, you, you have a 60 second or 60 day shot clock now for review, for applications to be reviewed. But the clock only starts once applications are considered complete. And a number of the things that you talked about are, for example, the checklist, the fire safety checklist would be adding to the set of things that map can needs to do in order to be considered to have a complete application. And my question is, to what extent does state allow us to do that? For example, for the trails committee review or whatever, you know, if we end up doing something in that realm, could that be not part of the review, but a condition of application? In other words, until you've gone through that process, you haven't applied, your application is not yet complete.
Yes. So a, a similar issue has come up in the telecommunications field where there is also a shot clock. And cities and towns were adding these extra pre-application requirements to the process. And ultimately, the FCC ruled that those pre-application requirements, once they started, that actually started the time for the shot clock to run. We have not seen that yet in the ADU realm. So I think currently we still have the ability to, to add those requirements to the application. But it's certainly something that HCD is monitoring. And if they think that these requirements are too onerous, they, they wouldn't approve our ordinance. And I, I think that the fire safety checklist in, in my judgment is something that's very reasonable in, given our community. And we've added some special findings to our ordinance. I, I think that HCD should approve that. We don't have the same level of confidence with the, the trails issue, that trails consultation.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and then one other question on the, on the sunset. If this were, if this ordinance were to sunset, then at that point of sunset, we would essentially revert to whatever state law is as is in effect at that time. So we would, we would be essentially opening up and removing a lot of the constraints and the carrot and stick approach and everything else that this ordinance is designed to, to put in there. If that were to happen. And that's, that's what you were saying is why staff doesn't, part of the reason staff doesn't support having a sunset provision in there is that one day, all of our rules and restrictions and regulations and the fire safety checklist and all the rest of it would just go away.
That's correct.
Thank you. Those are all my questions.
I'm sorry, Mayor Durbin, may I, just to clarify, Cora. Would, I mean, the, the plan would be to bring forward before the, before there was the sunset revision to the, to the ordinance, whether it's actual change or to keep it going as is, we would do that.
We can do that anyway without a sunset and we wouldn't have to then amend it to remove the sunset clause. Correct.
Yes, what, what our recommendation was at issue was to bring a report to the planning commission and, and the town council rather than just have this automatic sunset.
Okay, other questions? Jeff?
Thank you. So so the, the checklist we're talking about would be something that had to be submitted as part of the initial application and then would also be verified sort of during final, at final inspection along with like say the planning walkthroughs and other everything else that we verified that final for a building.
Yes.
Okay. And am I reading the, the report correctly that we, that if someone, even if someone is basically maxed out or near maxed out on their AMFA, that we basically have to approve up to 800 square feet for, for a separate ADU?
Yes.
But we're limited, they're limited 800, but we, they can now go perhaps 798 square feet over their AMFA?
Correct.
If they're, okay.
Yeah.
And under current state law, if somebody does build in our, you know, in the state setback, but, but, but within our setback, so like 10 feet away, they can build 800 square feet and there's no, is there, is there any height limit on that? Or can we impose a height limit on those?
Well, I think right now our current town height limit would apply. So we're proposing a more strict height limit if you don't comply with our local setbacks.
Okay, so, so our, you know, so the, if, if right as of today, if somebody wanted to build something four feet from their property line, they could build 18 to 18 and 18 and 24 guidelines in place. Okay. I think that's my questions for the moment. Thank you.
Okay, let me, oh, John Richards.
Yeah, I think this is for Laura. The the requirement to go to ASCC is either, is that kicked in at all, given the larger, the option to go to a larger size? If they follow our setbacks, is that something that we can apply?
If I'm understanding your question, we cannot apply a discretionary review. Such as ASCC or staff discretionary review for the ones that are required to be ministerial in the state law.
Okay, but, but the ones that are, are allowed to go to 1,200 square feet, for instance, as an, as an exemption, given the larger setbacks. I, I know that we have, we have, we have required that ASCC review some projects given some site constraints like big, big cuts and fill and that kind of thing. I don't know if that's, if that, if that applies in this case, if we do allow the 1,200 square foot or whatever. Larger, larger allowance would be given to larger setbacks.
So the existing size requirements and discretionary review requirements, if you comply with all of our existing requirements and our existing setbacks remain from the previous ordinance. So the additional restrictions that we're proposing here are to address the setback issue and to limit the ADUs that are within our local setbacks as strictly as we can think to. And then our other town requirements related to site development permits, building code, fire code, all of those things would remain in effect regardless.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Sarah?
I'm wondering, I, I have two questions. One is reading the packet and then reviewing, you know, looking to these slides, I'm, I'm a little confused on the points where woodside fire is involved. If you, Cara, could summarize that, obviously it's in the checklist. But I think I also saw on red page, page 90, that it's part of the application process. So are those one in the same, I guess, is another way to ask the question, or if you could just summarize what the touchpoints are with woodside fire. The second one is, was curious about your comment about perhaps creating the checklist before we finalize the ordinance, which sounds wise to me. I'm curious what's realistic from a timeline perspective. Not, I think, given that the ordinance, the second reading is on the next meeting agenda already. So is that a realistic thing to accomplish?
I think, thank you for those questions. So the the fire district is expected to review the checklist. And we would expect that any application that is, that does not comply with local setbacks will be required to fill out this, the checklist. And it's, it, the checklist will likely have a set of objective standards that may not be, it, it, they may be easily implementable by our staff. And so it may be that woodside fire actually doesn't even need to review any of the, any of the checklist items. However, it's also possible that the checklist may contain some things like, one of the things that we've discussed, for instance, is if you put in fire sprinklers, then you don't need to do A, B, and C. Or you can do A or B or C or D. You know, it, it can be that type of checklist. And so in that situation, we may want to have woodside fire weigh in on the appropriateness of the fire protection measures. And in that case, they would review at the front end of the project. Then, once the, once the project is, is finalized and it goes through the building permit review process, the fire district also gets involved and the plans are routed to the fire district and they review at that point. And then, once the building is completed, I, I don't believe that the fire district does an actual inspection unless there are fire sprinklers. And if there are fire sprinklers, then that's the third point where the fire district gets involved. And then in terms of your question about the checklist, I, I think that it's certainly possible to develop the checklist before the ordinance goes into effect because we have, you know, the second rating and then it doesn't go into effect for another 30 days. So we can certainly develop the checklist depending on whether it needs to go to the planning commission. Whether there's, there's room on the planning commission's agenda to review it is, is really, I guess, the, the big issue. But then we could quickly get it on, on the following town council agenda.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a few questions. First of all, this recommendation that the applicant must notify the neighbors. What if the neighbors don't like the project? Is there any mechanism for them to alter the project, complain?
Right. So most of the applications are going to be ministerial. And so those are, that means that it's going to be administered by staff and, and there will not be an appeal process for the neighbors. However, we are encouraging neighbors to talk to one another and to, you know, talk to each other at, at early stages of the project. And so the planning commission's perspective on this was that this type of notice is in line with, with that, you know, type of principle. And so the, the hope of the planning commission was that if, if a resident receives notice that the ADU is being built next to them, they may call the town, the town would then refer them back to the applicant and then the applicant could have a direct conversation with the resident, their neighbor.
Fine. Okay, I got it. That's, that's the friendly way to do it. Doesn't always work out. Okay, my next question, and we did, you did touch on this, HCD must approve the final ordinance. Staff felt that the trails was a little iffy. What do you think about this three year sunset? Being approved by HCD?
So I think that H, that's a, that's a great question. I, I think that HCD would approve the sunset. So I think that H, that's a, that's a great question. I, I think that HCD would approve the sunset. However, the, the reservation we had about that was that if we're going to include ADUs as part of our RENA number, and that's the next agenda item, we are, we are pretty certain that there will be a significant amount of ADUs built into our site inventory for this housing element cycle. If we have an ADU ordinance that sunsets in three years, HCD may have some pushback with respect to, to allowing, you know, a significant number of ADUs count towards our RENA.
Okay.
So that's, that's a reservation. It's, you know, it's, I can't, I can't say for certain how they would react.
Right, and then my last question is, so there's this much quicker timeframe, we're sixty days, this ADU has to be approved. What if you pass the sixty days and it's still not approved?
Right, so then the applicant legally can file a lawsuit against the town and require the town to issue a permit.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so if those, yes.
I have to follow.
Oh, I think, does John, is that, is your?
Yeah, my hand's up.
Okay, John.
Okay, I'm sorry. The clarification. Been some discussion about fire sprinklers off and on, and there've been some letters from people in the community. Just wanted clarification. I haven't practiced architecture now for about a year, but the last two projects that I did in town, last two ADUs I did, rather, both required fire sprinklers, and I don't believe that either house had a fire sprinkler system, and they were required by the fire department. So I just want to clarify that that is the case and it hasn't changed.
So, yes, the state law now contains a requirement that if the main house is not required to be sprinkled, then the ADU may not be sprinkled. There is an issue, a question about perhaps if you're in a fire, say, a very high fire hazard area, or if there is some evidence of, of significant fire risk, that a public, that, that the town could impose a a sprinkle requirement on the ADU, even though the main building does not contain sprinklers. That's an open issue right now. HCD has said, no, you can't do that, but there, there, it is possible that they may be open to that argument under the right circumstances.
Yeah, that, that's interesting. That's the same exact argument that I heard two years ago, three years ago, during, designing one of those buildings. So that, that'll be interesting to follow. Thank you.
Craig?
Yeah, I just had a question about timeline, and it sort of ties into the checklist timeline. What, how long does it take HD to approve our ordinance? Once we, once we've done our second reading, it's, the ordinance as written would take effect within thirty days, but HD still needs to approve it. Do they do that within thirty days?
No. They're taking a long time.
Okay, and how long typically? I mean, like ninety, hundred and twenty, a year, how long?
So I, I think that we would still, it, it, I think that we could still enforce our ordinance if it's been adopted by the council. And then if, if later, though, HCD were to come around and say we don't approve it, then we would have to go back and, and change the ordinance. But we would plan to enforce our ordinance, provided that, that, you know, the council adopts it.
That, that makes sense to me. And then do they, would they also need to review the fire safety checklist?
That's a good question.
Stuff into the fire safety checklist.
Right. I, I, I don't know if, if they would require that or not.
They may tell us when they review the ordinance, whether they want to review the.
Exactly.
Okay, I was just thinking that. Yeah. I, I, I think it would be nice to have the checklist by the time the ordinance takes effect. You know, if, as you said, it needs to line up with the Planning Commission calendar, and then it's got to come to the council to be approved as well. But you know, we've got thirty days plus two weeks. Hopefully, we can, we can get at least an initial fire safety checklist in place by then.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any more questions before I open the public hearing? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. Sharon? Are there members of our community who would like to speak to the item?
Yes, Judy Murphy.
Judy Murphy.
Hi, dear. I just want to make a quick comment, and that is that the sustainability spent considerable amount of time on the details of reach codes. And they, when, they might be helpful in drafting the checklist so that that doesn't all fall on staff, especially if you're looking at ways to speed the process up. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Bob Turcot.
Turcot.
Thank you. One note, I, I heard a very strong reason for the Plan Commission to request the sunset clause, being the recognition that the safety element and housing elements about, about to be revised, and they felt strongly that there should be a mechanism to ordinance is reviewed after that. I didn't hear that mentioned today. I just wanted to bring that out. The other thing I wanted to talk about was fire hazard in Portola Valley. As you know, CAL FIRE identified areas as very high fire hazard severity zone comprises about ten percent of the land of Portola Valley. The ADU restricted area, I understand, was tailored to coincide with that area. But that's not the only area of elevated risk in Portola Valley. CAL FIRE also determined approximately half the area of Portola Valley outside that ADU restricted zone is at high fire hazard severity. An independent study done by Ray Moretz concluded the same thing. His findings based on studies of vegetation mode correlated with CAL fires. I learned today in reading the agenda that Woodside Fire Protection District recognized four very high fire hazard severity zones conferred with CAL FIRE and CAL FIRE concurred. Certainly, any amateur who's spent a little bit of time reading about fire dynamics and wildfires will recognize the canyon network in central Portola Valley and other parts of Portola Valley as being a significant elevated hazard for wildfire. The town hasn't recognized these areas, but that doesn't mean that the elevated hazard doesn't exist. And so in looking at the, at the proposal, there are several features that jump out. It is possible, if this passes, to have a non-sprinklered new construction for human habitation in these areas that are clearly at elevated risk of severe wildfire. There's no requirements on building separation. The National Fire Protection Association standards call for thirty-foot separation between buildings. And our evacuation capacity has yet to be demonstrated. This proposal would put more people, more sources of ignition, more fuel into these elevated areas of elevated hazard. And so it, to me, it doesn't, it doesn't really pass the sniff test. State law provides a mechanism for Portola Valley to exclude areas as needed for public safety, and they should certainly do that with these ADUs in areas that elevated wildfire hazard. If the issue is a lack of designation by the town, I, I think it would be appropriate for the town to revisit this and consider whether we really want unsprinklered buildings, et cetera, in these areas of elevated hazard. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon? Next. Oh, you're muted.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, Mayor Derwin, and council members, as you consider a substantial piece of work. I have a, a comment and a question. And so just to add to the commentary about the three-year sunset clause first, and then my question second. So, and that is that I attended the Planning Commission meeting at which the subcommittee members Nicholas Targ and Judith Haskell very, very strongly recommended a three-year sunset of this ordinance. And in the vote, they were joined by Chair Craig Taylor, and I, I, I heard the minority viewpoint, and I read it in the staff, in the staff report tonight, that it would indeed, in three years' time, as Jeremy pointed out, this would need to come back to you for consideration. So on the one hand, it would cost, you know, what, about fifty percent of a meeting, possibly two meetings, three years in the future. But on the other hand, between the United Nations IPCC climate report that was leaked today, the Western statewide drought that we all know about, last year's fire season, and then I took the trouble to call my excellent insurance broker today. Just was curious what, what they were seeing, and the senior, the senior writer said, in the thirty years they've been in the insurance industry, this is by far the worst year for placement and trying to find coverage for their clients. They're seeing dramatic changes. And of course, they don't know what's going to happen in the future, and neither do we. But as we all look at your efforts to represent us, the residents of the community as best you can, I really urge a certain amount of humility and prudence and sanity in the face of, of so much change. And now to my question, which is actually quite different. So to catch my breath. I, the last RENA chapter five, we, we did quite well, but with something over a hundred, a hundred units amongst the very low, low, moderate, and above categories. I was interested to learn, if I could, how many of those were in fact ADUs? And what the distribution of the ADUs was across the four categories? I'm trying to understand kind of what we're looking at in the future in terms of proportionality, if the future is like the past.
Is that your question?
Yes, yes. Did you understand it?
I sure did.
Good.
Not sure if Laura wants to answer this now or get back to you. Offline, Laura?
In order to answer in specifics, I would have to get back to Betsy offline. The next agenda item has the RENA allocation according to income levels, and so that's a source of information that will represent generally how the ADUs have been distributed in this RENA cycle. And so that would be helpful. And then, Betsy, I can give you some specifics.
I'd appreciate that. Thank you, Laura.
Sharon? Rusty Day?
Thank you. I think that Bob Turcot and Betsy Morgenthauer put their finger on some very important points. And as to the ADU, the numbers of ADUs, if you could kindly, Laura, make that public and not just get back to Betsy, I think we would all like to have that information. So it'd be good to see that publicized and reflected, so the public as a whole can be aware of that. I want to speak in favor of the sunset provision. And I also want to speak in favor of ensuring that the checklist gets generated and considered before the reading of this ordinance, that it's as a part of this ordinance. And let me speak about the sunset provision first. Betsy recounted the proceedings before the Planning Commission. One thing she didn't mention, however, was that none of those hearings was the Fire District represented, and I don't see a representative from the Fire District today. And I think it's important for the committee, for the, the, the commission, for the Town Council, and certainly for the residents, to hear from the Fire District about the safety implications of this ordinance. I understand that we're operating under a mandate. I understand that in many ways you feel your hands are tied. Notwithstanding that, I think it is very important for you to hear objective, professional, direct assessment of the situation we're confronting and what kind of situation this creates for us. So I would very much hope that we hear from the Fire Department and especially the Fire Marshal at the next reading of the ordinance. It's also in the, in the Planning Commission's deliberations, they made clear that they wanted the professional advice and guidance of the Fire Marshal, and they wanted him involved in deciding when it was and was not safe to place ADUs on this landscape. And that's the concept, the genesis of the concept for a checklist. And it was also widely discussed within the Planning Commission that it would be best to have that ordinance enacted into, have that checklist enacted into the ordinance and to get public feedback on that. And that's why I would strongly urge the Town Council to insist upon development and presentation of the checklist before it takes up finalization of this ordinance on the second reading. I have just one last question, much like Ms. Morgenthauers. I understand tonight, I, I heard that the ordinance is not in effect, that we're operating under state law since January of this year. And I assume that ADUs are being considered and approved on that basis. So it would also be helpful to have a report before the next reading of how many ADUs have been considered under state law, not under our ordinance, and in particular, how many ADUs without sprinklering have been approved. I think that, that generating information, statistics about what we are doing in the Planning Department and what kinds of numbers and units we're considering and approving, and what's getting enacted would be very helpful to all the residents as we consider these issues and RENA and others. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, my ADU is sprinkled. Sharon?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, I'm gonna just wait one more second. I heard he hands raising. Nope. Close the public hearing and bring it back to the council. I guess we can, you know, sort of speak generally about how we feel about the ordinance, but I, we need to specifically address the Planning and Building Director Authority consultation with the Trails Committee, three-year sunset provision, and I think we should add the checklist timing. So who would like to begin? Craig?
Um, yeah, I'll, I'll start off and say I'm, I'm supportive of getting this ordinance in place as quickly as we can. And the primary reason for that is without this ordinance, I think we are less fire safe and less in control of housing development in Portola Valley than if we put this ordinance in place. State law provides very few protections for fire safety without having an ordinance like the one that is being proposed, being put in place. If we do not enact this ordinance, then somebody could come in tomorrow and propose to build a twenty-four-foot-high ADU four feet from the property line, and we would have little choice, but with no sprinklers, we would have little, and made of wood, we'd have little choice but to approve it. So I think it's important that everybody understands that this ordinance is not allowing people to do things that they're not currently allowed to do. It's actually opposite. This ordinance restricts what people are allowed to do and encourages them to build ADUs if they're going to be building them more in line with the way that Portola Valley wants houses and properties to be developed and built with fire safety issues, aesthetic issues, setbacks, and all the rest of what we're used to in mind, that state law does not do. And for the same reason, I oppose the sunset provision. I think it is inevitable that we will have to revise this ordinance probably multiple times. probably multiple times over the coming three years. But having a sunset provision in there, if it were ever to kick in, which would be the only reason for having a sunset provision, if it were ever to kick in, we would revert again to state law that provides fewer protections for Portola Valley than this ordinance does. So I think it's very important that we do not include the sunset provision and that we move forward with this as quickly as we can. I think giving Laura the authority to put this fire safety checklist together with Don Bullard, I was at one of the subcommittee meetings, which was with Don and Laura, where Don was talking about it. We were discussing what the best issue, what the best way was for the Fire Department to be involved in reviewing these ADUs and what they thought was appropriate. And the professionals at Woodside Fire think that this fire safety checklist is the best way for them to be involved. So that, that wasn't a public meeting. It was for efficiency's sake between staff and the subcommittee, and I was invited to attend as well. But that is what, what the Fire Department would like to see. So I think those are my general comments.
Consultation with the Trails Committee.
Oh, Trails Committee. I, I'm very wary of that. I suspect that, you know, where we would end up is somewhere very similar to what we discussed with the notification of neighbors, which is, you know, we might notify the Trails Committee, they'd have a discussion about it. They are not experts on fire safety. I rather trust Woodside Fire for what fire safety restrictions we might impose. And state law prevents the Trails, would prevent the Trails Committee from considering issues such as aesthetics. So things like, oh, I don't want this looming thing next to the trail would not be something that they would be allowed to, to, to control. So I, I'm a little wary of sending something to the Trails Committee to have them discuss it, but not be able to actually impact it. That seems like it would just cause more upset. On the other hand, you know, maybe having them discuss it and be aware of what's going on, if it's clear to them that, you know, they're, they can't impact the project, that they're not legally allowed to modify things. They might ask the, they may, might be useful education for applicants and so on. So maybe people might change their applications. But the, the whole purpose of the state law is to not introduce a whole bunch of burdens on applicants. It's to, to increase production of these ADUs. So I'm not sure what the right way is solving that one. But it's, it's, you know, this would not be moving our ASCC review process to the Trails Committee. It would have to be a very constrained, focused agenda item for the Trails Committee if they're, if it were to go to them.
Okay. And then as far as the fire safety checklist and?
I would love to see that as quickly as possible, as quickly as staff and the Fire Department could, could bring it to us.
Okay. Who would like to speak next? John?
Yes, Craig, nice, nicely put. I agree with everything you said. I agree on the planning, planner's authority to make the, put together the, the checklist with the Fire Department. I think that makes perfect sense. I'm glad to hear the Fire Department is, is encouraging that. This sunset issue, I have never seen a need in this town with our, with our staff to do that. We are constantly looking at things over and revising and reviewing. It's just never, never been a problem. And I think it would just be an impediment and a more of a obstacle than anything. So I do not, do not approve putting a sunset clause in. The Trails Committee, you know, I could almost see that Trails Committee is, the issues that they might face, such as a trail that is on a slope next to high grasses or something, that, that might even end up being something, part of a checklist issue that we're putting together, fire safety checks. So I think that would be a way to, to address the critical issues without actually having to shut it off to a committee and, and spend more time and, and disappoint people in their inability to, to affect things. I would also like to suggest that we go ahead and perhaps by way of the checklist again, requires fire sprinklers in, at least in cases where it's clear that, that they would be a real benefit. I think in most cases in Portola, Portola Valley, that's going to be the case. And so I think we could almost just say blanket, yes, fire sprinklers are going to be required in separate ADUs. Putting them in existing residences is another story. That's hugely expensive and would kind of defeat the purpose of putting in a G, JADU. So I, I, I think that's more of a stretch. But I think for new construction, it makes perfect sense. And it's not, in the scheme of construction, it's not an enormous thing. So, and there are ways, there are ways to do it at a reasonable cost. So that, I think I covered everything. That's it.
I think you did. Jeremy wanted to make a comment. Do you want to make the comment now or after all the council has spoken?
After all the council.
Okay. Remind me, because you know how I'm forgetting everything today? I was supposed to sign checks. I think it was yesterday, forgot. Supposed to sign checks. I forgot totally. He said, come at 1:00. Called at 1:30. I said, why are you calling? So this is the problem, youngsters, when you age, and you try to multitask. Okay, who are we talking to next? Craig, John, Jeff?
Thanks. A couple of things. I completely agree with John's idea about requiring the sprinklers. I mean, the, if memory serves, the guideline for sprinklers in an existing house is, I think it's either $400,000 or 50% of the cost of the structure. There's, there's a, there's a cutoff that almost everybody crosses pretty easily. I feel like for a new build, for a new ADU, new construction, it's much easier. I mean, that's the time to put in your, your, your sprinkler, because it's so much easier. So I actually, if it's, if it's, if we can do that within current state ADU law, I completely support that. I agree. I, I don't, I don't see, I don't, I'm not crazy about adding something like a sunset clause when there's no indication that there's something that's going to happen three years to, to make this obsolete. I mean, I think we're going to be, the, the ground tier is going to be shifting well before three years. We're, we're going to be revisiting this regularly, I think, in one form or another. So I don't see the need for, for a sunset provision. I'm, I support giving the Planning Director the, the guideline authority that we're talking about and to work with the Fire Marshal on the, on the checklist. I actually had one question for Cara. We've heard these repeated assertions that we can sort of limit of adopting additional, you know, fire zone, fire danger zones in town, which are not consistent with my understanding of what we can and can't do. And I was just curious if you, if Cara, if you cared to weigh in on just what we actually, I mean, what, what we're actually allowed to do in terms of those, those other zones that have been on the draft maps or on the Moritz report? What we, can we actually, what can we do with those, if anything?
Yeah. So they, for a local responsibility agency such as the town, the, the high fire areas don't really have any legal significance. Very high fire hazard areas under state law are required to comply with the higher building standards for a WUI, you know, Chapter 7A. But there's no separate requirement for high fire hazard areas. Also, as we will learn in the next item, HCD does not change its, its, currently does not have a policy to recognize high fire hazard areas as areas that should not be developed. There is some legislation pending that could change that. But currently, there, there really isn't much of a, you know, a state law benefit to designating these as high fire hazard areas. That being said, when we, when we get into our housing element update and we start to see some of these areas further articulated and defined, you may, as a policy matter, decide that it's not appropriate to create denser housing in high fire hazard areas. That's a policy decision that you can certainly make in terms of zoning decisions. But currently, there's no linkage to, you know, Chapter 7A or housing element requirements.
Okay, thank you. Did I, did I, I think, I think in general, I agree with, with what Craig and John have already said with a few things I added in my comments. So I think that's all I have to say.
Trails?
Oh, um, it feels like we're sort of bringing someone in who's probably not going to have a whole lot of, I mean, not going to be able to do a whole. I mean, so they're not going to, they're not going to stop someone for building an ADU there. I mean, there'll be some input. It feels like, it, it just, it feels like it complicates the, the 60-day period that we have to get things done. I mean, just as a practical matter, what, what are we defining as proximity to a trail? Is it 100 feet? Is it 10 feet? Is it?
I thought it was, oh, it's four feet setback, but you're right. The trail is beyond the setback. Cara?
There, there was a, a trigger in, in the ordinance. And it, if it's within any distance between the local setback and four feet, would, would trigger the consultation.
So we're sort of assuming that the trail runs right next to someone's property? And then it's, okay, okay. Yeah, I don't feel the straw. I mean, I just, just doesn't, I don't see a point, much point to it in the sense that it doesn't feel like it's going to have a huge impact on these projects. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but it just feels like we're sort of asking them to weigh in, but it's probably not going to have a whole lot of impact, so.
And you agree with Craig and John that you'd like to see this ordinance go into effect as soon as we can?
Yes.
Get moving immediately on the fire safety checklist?
Yeah. And I mean, just, just for reference, I mean, as background, I mean, you know, the Fire Safety Committee has been working with the Fire Marshal for over a year on, on our home hardening measures, much of which are what the things that are going to go into this. I mean, we've gotten a lot of input from the Fire, Fire Marshal and other safety professionals about what goes into these guidelines.
Okay, great. All right, Sarah?
I'll do the easy ones first. I totally agree with Craig's comments about the importance of the speed of the ordinance. And related to that, obviously, the checklist is a critical part of that. And I agree that that should happen before the ordinance goes into effect. I also wanted to make a comment there, just maybe for clarification. Craig, I think I heard from you that the Fire Marshal had suggested in that meeting that the best way for the Fire Department to be involved was to be involved in the creation of this checklist. I know there was a comment earlier about getting the Fire Marshal involved, and it sounds like that has happened. And their recommendation was, this is the, that the, that the method by which they would be involved is through the checklist. I just wanted to kind of reiterate that, if that's in fact the case, just for the record.
Yeah, if I, if I may, through the chair, at, at the meeting that I attended, there was discussion with the Fire Marshal. Originally, the Planning Commission had wanted the Fire Marshal potentially be even more involved to have a direct review by the Fire Marshal as part of the pre-application process that would include some kind of a letter from the Fire Marshal or something like that, that said, you know, the Fire Marshal has reviewed it and despite the proximity to the property line, sufficient mitigating measures have been taken or something. And so in discussion with the Fire Marshal, the Fire Marshal said, well, how would I decide whether or not to actually issue that letter? And the answer was by going through a checklist. And so in discussion, it made sense to create that checklist in collaboration between our Planning Director and the Fire Marshal. And then just have that as part of the standard application packet, rather than creating a process where you have to go to the Fire Marshal, come to us, go to the Fire Marshal, go back to us, or whatever that might be. So having it be consolidated into one checklist that you know ahead of time what you need to do, the Fire Marshal thought was the most appropriate way of, of being involved in that, in that kind of pre-application process.
Thank you. On the Trails Committee, I agree. I think that, you know, I, I appreciate the, the intent, but I feel like it just does create a situation where you have a committee that doesn't really have any real impact or ability to affect things. So it just kind of creates frustration more than anything. And I'm not sure that that's necessarily productive. I think the fourth and final is really related to the sunset. And on this one, I'm, I'm just kind of looking for a little clarity as well. With the Planning Commission, what was the, for the, for the commissioners that were in support of a sunset? You know, what was the rationale there? I, I know it was discussed, but just would like a little bit more clarity there, if anybody can provide that. Craig?
Yeah, so as liaison, I was at the Planning Commission meeting also where they were discussing this. And to the best of my understanding, the, the argument in favor of putting the sunset provision is was essentially a forcing function to guarantee that we would have to revisit this within the next three years. You know, my, yeah, that, well, that, that was what, that was what I think the impetus for the sunset provision was.
Okay, thank you. And I guess so, 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 you know, I'm, having been new to that, this, I don't really have the experience of seeing how frequently these kind of things get updated. And so pardon the questions here. I'm also wondering, you know, we know that CAL FIRE maps are going to be updated, the housing elements happening, the safety elements happening. All three of those things are going to happen before that three, three-year, you know, point. I don't know, just in, in a, in an effort to bring comfort to those that are concerned about it, is, is there wording or something that we could put into it that would suggest, you know, when such and such happens, that triggers a review or something versus just saying it's an arbitrary three-year thing? I'm just kind of brainstorming here. I don't, that may, may not make sense. But if the concern is that this is a moving, you know, that things are evolving and there's a lot of information coming, particularly within the next 12 months, is there a way to give comfort to that? Craig, thanks.
So again, Marion, if I may, you know, I, I think my view of it is, you know, the last time we did a, an overhaul of our ADU ordinance was two years ago, less than two years ago, 2019. And it was roughly this same level of overhaul then that, that we're doing now. And again, you know, the reason that we, we're doing it now is because state law has changed and required us to update the ordinance. So I fully expect state law is going to change again next year. And the year after that, we'll get the new fire maps, we'll have a new housing element. Each of those things will require us to update our ordinance to be compatible with those changes. The concern that I have with a sunset provision for this or anything else is whether or not those, the, the environment and the laws around it change. We are better off with this ordinance than without this ordinance. And that will also be the case three years from now. If there's some reason that we didn't revisit it, for whatever reason that might be, I would not want this ordinance to sunset because we would be worse off without it than we are with it. That said, I fully expect that staff will continue to bring ordinance updates to us when state law changes or fire safety issues change and our ordinances need us to, to update them.
Thank you.
So first of all, I do, but I want to make sure Sarah's done it. Are you done, Sarah? I guess so. I don't, yeah, you are. You done?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to weigh in on that last item. And that, and that is that, pretty much by default, every time a project comes through our planning department, the ordinance is revisited. So there is, there is that, that sort of constant check on things. Is how, how it relates to current law, state law, is it's going to be revisited by the time somebody brings in a project, and, and at least to a certain level. So I, I think that's, should bring some measure of comfort to people who are concerned that, that it might be outdated or incompatible at some point.
Alrighty. I don't have a lot to add, so I'm just going to basically say yes or no. The planning and building director, given authority and working with the fire marshal on the checklist, yes. I think that is a very good idea. Consultation with the trails committee on ADUs that are four feet from, from four-foot setback, I think it is a lovely idea. Conceptually, I think it would be a nightmare if we kept it in there. That has to go. Three-year sunset, again, I hear, I hear the planning commission, I understand what they're trying to do, but we've never had a problem with talking about things, updating things, bringing the new laws in. I mean, I don't, how many times have we done, trying to think of something recent where we keep updating? This field is going to be crazy. There will be laws having to do with fi- high fire areas. There will be tons of housing laws that are passed. So I say, no, no go on three-year sunset. Leave it as is. This will be amended often. Checklist timing and the ordinance timing, yes, I agree with Craig. We should do it quickly. Checklist, we should get going on. I guess according to Jeff, a lot of it's already been done, so it shouldn't be a problem to get it done about the time that this is approved, correct? The last reading? Sounds good, right? Or? Okay. And was there, so practically, what do we need to do? Some, we need to remove the three-year sunset, correct? From the resolution? Okay, who am I talking to? I'm looking at many heads that are just flat.
I, I think Jeremy has his question still, Marion.
It was, it was a comment, not a question, just to the trails committee portion. Just to, I think it's an opportunity to, to describe a little bit of what staff does as it relates to projects coming in to, for, for processing. Every project that comes into town, the, the planning and building staff has a conversation with the applicant about the viability of their project as it relates to town code, design guidelines and, and other issues that we're aware of. And it, if, if we saw a project that was putting houses right next to a trail, one of the first things that we would say is, that's a really bad idea. You should not do that. Now, we don't have the authority to stop them, as I think this council knows. But that would, that's part of our regular day-to-day conversations with folks. So it's, if you will, I think it's baked into what we do. So I'm very confident that, you know, from this narrow band of where the staff sits, that we would continue to, to articulate those kinds of points to, to an applicant. And if they chose to move forward, that they understand that they're, the will of interpretation of code, design guidelines and what we know to be the precedence in town. Thanks.
Thank you for that clarification, Jeremy. So, oh, one other thing, the sprinklers. I know that both John and Jeff heartily recommend that we require sprinklers if we can, I guess in certain areas of town or in certain applications. I just wanted to get the read from Craig on that. How do you feel about that?
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that. I, I, you know, I suspect that probably state law will preclude it in some areas, but there are probably some areas that it doesn't, where we could make that a requirement. I think, you know, for, for those that are inside the local setbacks, we could probably just make it part of the checklist where, you know, option A is fire sprinklers and option B is also fire sprinklers. For the ones that are compliant with local setbacks that are new build detached units, I, I don't know if we would be allowed to in those cases. I guess you, you always have the carrot of if you want to exceed the state floor area. So if you want to build your bigger than eight hundred and fifty feet, if you want to go up to the town square foot limits for ADUs. So, you know, th- those kinds of things though may act to weaken the carrot and stick approach that we have, keeping people out of the setbacks. So there's, there's to some degree a trade-off. On balance, probably better to have a fire sprinkler building closer to the property line than to have a building without fire sprinklers anywhere on the property. So I, I think probably I would agree to lean towards fire sprinklers anywhere we can, we can try and require them and or at least strongly encourage them where we can't require them.
Sarah? Fire sprinklers?
Yeah, no, I agree with everything that's been said about the reasons to include them if we can.
Okay, and I do too. I was not happy to have to pay for them, but I have to say, I feel happy now that I've got them. Right. And so just to go back and review, we have this resolution to approve and we need to remove a few things in there, correct? We need to remove the three-year sunset and the consultation, consultation with the trails committee. Is that correct? Cara? Okay. And there anything else in there that we've rejected? Okay. So are there any more comments or does someone want to make a motion to approve the, trying to find it here? Where is it?
Motion to approve with those revisions.
Okay.
A little second.
Okay, Jeff? Discussion? Roll call.
Council member Alves?
Hi.
Council member Wernikoff?
Hi.
Council member Richards?
Hi.
Vice mayor Hughes?
Hi.
Mayor Derwin?
Hi. And I just want to recognize the work of the planning commission. This was really impressive and difficult. And I know there are members of the community who weren't happy. But you know, we're just going to keep moving forward. So our next item is item number twelve.
You take a three-minute break or five-minute break before the next, Marion? Be full of water and.
Okay, let's do a five-minute break. So we'll come back at, or maybe nine twenty-five, come back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Think we're all. I think we're all back. Are we? Wait, Jeff, are you back? Maybe not.
Jeff and Sarah haven't come back yet.
Okay. And did you notice that I forgot Jeremy? Forgot to call on you. No, remember what I said? I just can't remember you.
It, it, it's okay. There, there's a club of people who don't remember me, so it's fine.
I bet you really are a memorable human. So it's odd.
That's nice of you, I think. Thank you.
I think you did call on him because he had, he wanted to make the point about the.
Well, I was, I was supposed to go back and I completely forgot. Seriously, it was as if it was never said.
Oh.
All good.
Well, I guess so. Right now, I was still waiting for Jeff. Is there a sporting event on right now that he might be watching?
I don't think so.
Do you think he forgot that he's in a meeting?
I'm here.
All right, Jeff's here, so we're going to use my meeting. We are now on item number twelve. Recommendation by the town manager and the town attorney. Updating discussion on the final draft twenty twenty-three to thirty-one regional housing needs allocation. Who is going to begin?
I will be kicking off and then Karen Laura will be, Carl will be taking over. So I wanted to start just to set the framework for those who haven't participated in these conversations previous to tonight, how we reached this point. The housing element is required for an update per state law every eight years. We're at the end of the fifth cycle of the housing element. So we are through council direction, implementing a housing element update for the sixth cycle. On the April twenty-eighth council meeting agenda, the council set up the parameters of that discussion, appointed a subcommittee of Sarah and Jeff to work on a variety of related housing element responsibilities, including the subcommittee, excuse me, including the committee that's been created. The town has an arrangement with twenty-one elements, which is the county housing advisor to assist in the development of the housing element. And the town has an RFQ out for additional support, particularly around the drafting of the EIR related to the housing element that we should be bringing an item back to the council on the fourteenth of July for recommendation on that consultant. It's, I think it's also worth noting that we're also required to update the safety element at the same time as the housing element. And we'll have more to report on that potentially as early as the July fourteenth meeting. And RFQs, that'll turn it over to Cara.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen. Okay. Can you see the full screen now?
That's an old photo too. Look at that. Classic.
Isn't that nice?
No trees.
Yes. So, okay, we're, as, as Jeremy mentioned, we are embarking on the sixth cycle of the regional housing needs allocation. And so in terms of this presentation, just wanted to talk about what this process entails. Portola Valley's current RENA for the sixth cycle, the RENA appeal process. And then we will receive public input and go to depth council discussion. So first question is, what is the regional housing needs allocation process? This is referred to by the acronym RENA. And we throw that acronym around a lot. And what that involves is that every city and county in the state of California is required to plan for future housing growth in the, in all income areas. And so it's a long-term planning process that is mandated by state law. The state department of HCD assigns to all of the regional governments, the, the COGS, as was mentioned in the beginning of the meeting, they, they have a very important role in our state government. And so a portion of the overall state population is assigned to the various COGS. Our COG is for housing purposes is the A-BAG, the Association of Bay Area Governments. And A-BAG has recently joined with MTC, Metropolitan Transportation Commission, to form the new COG. And you're, you're, you're hearing MTC in action right now. But A-BAG and MTC is, is the local Bay Area COG that then assigns the local RENA allocations to the various cities and counties within that COG. So under housing element law, cities are required to plan for housing. They do this through their zoning code. There are certain fundamental principles under housing element law that allows cities to put particular project sites onto a housing inventory. But the cities are not required to build the housing. They are only allowed to plan for and accommodate through local zoning, the housing that is prescribed to them under the RENA process. As I mentioned, the state enforces this process through the housing element. So we are part of the A-BAG COG and the A-BAG has been meeting for the past year to determine what methodology it should be employed to assign these numbers to all of the local cities and counties within A-BAG. The factors that A-BAG ultimately decided on this cycle as opposed to the last cycle, on the, the, the factors are admittedly different. First of all, this cycle is going to concentrate on the number of jobs in a city. And that is more important than the number of houses within the jurisdiction. Also, the access to high opportunity areas is a, an important factor. High opportunity areas are mapped by the, the, actually by the federal government and by the state. And high opportunity areas include areas that have a wealth of services such as schools, community of serving facilities, parks, grocery stores, that type of thing. Also, transit and car access to jobs will be separately examined as a, a allocation factor. And this year, as we've mentioned in the past, equity factors come into play much more heavily than in previous cycles. These factors come into play in terms of income allocation for the housing units, but also in terms of individual cities and towns' individual allocation. Also, in previous cycles, how cities that had high allocations in previous cycles sometimes received lower allocations in the next cycle. This year, A-BAG decided not to adhere to that practice. And then finally, one of the articulated factors was that housing in high hazard areas, which include both fire, sea level rise and earthquake, is a concern. A-BAG noted it as a concern, but they, but they did state and take a public vote that RENA may not be the best tool to address this particular concern. So here is a map of the high opportunity areas in San Mateo County. And you can see that Portola Valley, along with Los Altos Hills and, and Cupertino, are, are all high opportunity areas. This dark blue is the highest of the high opportunity areas. And so as a result, we, we can expect, and we did receive a larger allocation this cycle than in the fifth cycle. In terms of comparing our, our previous cycle allocation to the current cycle, in last year's cycle, we received sixty-four total units. This year, dramatic increase, two hundred and fifty-three units. We've seen this throughout the board in terms of allocations in, in San Mateo and Santa Clara County. We also saw this in the allocations that came out a year before in Southern California. So we were prepared for a significant increase. So it is possible to appeal the Rena allocation. There are published criteria for appealing an allocation. The appeal needs to be based on one of three grounds, one or more of, of the three grounds. First ground is that A BAG failed to adequately consider the information regarding factors under state law. The factors that are required to be. To be considered are in the staff report. They include such things as existing and projected jobs and housing relationship. Lack of capacity for sewer or water. Availability of land suitable for urban development. Lands protected from urban development under existing federal or state programs. And the percentage of existing households paying more than thirty percent and more than fifty percent of income. Et cetera, and those, those are detailed in, in the staff report. The second factor for criteria for appeal is that A BAG failed to allocate in a manner. That furthers the intent of the objectives under state law. Again, the objectives are included in packet page one twenty-six footnote six. These objectives include things like increasing housing supply and mixes of housing types. Promoting infill development and socio-economic equity. Protecting environmental and agricultural resources. Improving intra-regional jobs to housing relationship. And affirmatively furthering fair housing. The final criteria for appeal is a change in circumstances since the methodology was adopted. The appeal timeline is, has been published by A BAG. The last day to appeal is July eighth. Then A BAG will review all of those appeals and comments. On appeals can be taken up to August thirtieth. The town has the ability to comment on other appeals filed by other agencies. Because there is a relationship between other towns appealing their A BAG. If that appeal is sustained, that would require a reallocation of other. Agencies Rena allocation. And so there is a time period built into this process where cities and counties can comment about the. Appeals. HCD is also given the ability to comment on all appeals filed. The appeal hearings are heard, anticipate to be heard in September and October of. This year, typically the hearings take place in one joint hearing. In Southern California, because there were so many appeals, the hearings took place over a multi-day period. We don't know how many appeals will be filed in, in our region and so it, a similar case. Might occur here. And then in November, December, the final Rena allocation will be issued by A BAG. And then the cities and towns have until January one, twenty twenty-three to. Submit their housing element for certification by HCD. So in the past, the, the town has raised some concerns about the. Both the, the methodology and the Rena allocation this cycle. The town has submitted an objection to the preliminary allocation to HCD. That's also in the, in the packet. And the, the grounds that the town objected to the, the preliminary allocation. Were twofold, first that the town has a high fire risk. And second, that the town has inadequate public infrastructure to support the additional housing development. Both of those. Grounds were commented on by HCD and HCD. Did not express an interest in, in either of those two arguments. In the past, the town has also discussed sort of the, the changing commute patterns and. The change in the workforce in light of COVID. Other towns have also raised that in connection with the Southern California appeals. And it does not appear at this point that that argument is getting much traction. In terms of past appeal results, the staff report goes into some detail about that. The, as I mentioned, the Southern California Association of Government, known as SCAG. Region had dramatic Rena allocation increases. They received fifty-two appeals, which is a, a very large amount. Of those fifty-two appeals, only two of them were partially sustained. One of the appeals that was sustained was based on a, a technical. Sort of mis. calculation. And or misallocation between a JPA and, and the county. And so that appeal, there was a slight adjustment to the numbers based on that allocation. And then a second city, Pico Rivera. Appealed based on some. Information regarding flooding and some ongoing. Concerns that the city had regarding some. A dam that was. Blocking a, some, some water and there were some concerns that the, that the dam may break. And there was documented evidence of, of that concern. And if that were to occur, that the evacuation routes would be impacted. And so Pico Rivera was successful to, to a modest extent in reducing their. Their numbers. Other than that, all of the other appeals were denied. In terms of another indicator we have is the previous cycle, eight years ago, in terms of the A BAG appeals. At that time, there were fourteen appeals and only three of those appeals were successful. One of them involved Palo Alto, where there was again, one of these allocation misallocation issues between. The county of Santa Clara and Palo Alto. And that was, that resulted in a modest reduction of numbers for Palo Alto. So in terms of next steps, the, the council will be required to examine through the housing element process. The zoning opportunities needed to accommodate the Rena allocation. The town council, as Jeremy mentioned, has already formed a housing element advisory committee to help identify sites and to help identify zoning opportunities. To accommodate the Rena. The new CAL FIRE maps are expected to come out. We were of course hoping that they would have been published by now. They have, they will have a significant impact on many cities, not just Portola Valley, but many cities planning for. Housing purposes. And unfortunately though, the, the maps have not yet been released. And then finally, the, the town is also in the process of developing best practices for. Home hardening, vegetative management and defensible space. And those practices will also be taken into account as we move forward with. The additional housing that we are expected to accommodate by the state. And with that, happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council, who has a question? Okay, I don't see any hands up. All right, then with no questions, I guess we can go to public comment. So. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand and Sharon will recognize you.
Bob Turcot.
Bob Turcot.
Hi, I missed you guys. It's been so long. I was a little perplexed about the. The description of appeals for fire risk sort of falling on uninterested ears. The letter that the town received from. The executive director of A BAG says, and it quotes, the A BAG blueprint gross geographies not only exclude CAL FIRE. Designated very high severity areas. But also exclude high fire hazards severity areas and unincorporated communities. As well as county designated wildland urban interface areas where applicable. The latter would seem to apply to us. And yet, when I went through the methodology. And using a hypothetical scenario of no higher or very high fire hazards severity zones in Portola Valley. The result was two hundred and fifty-three units. If I repeat the exercise, assuming all of Portola Valley was a very high fire hazard severity zone. The result was two hundred and fifty-three units. In other words, the degree of fire hazards severity, the extent of land area in Portola Valley that's at very high risk. Did not influence our Rena number. In addition, neither did this Andrea's fault nor the associated thresholds which cross evacuation routes. And so I wonder if. The executive director of A BAG is misinformed about the methodology, if there was an error in the design of methodology. When an area municipality like Portola Valley, which has sixty-five percent of its area documented by CAL FIRE to be of either higher or very high fire hazards. Severity zone. Does not receive any modulation of the, of the number that's assigned. If we had a small area at elevated risk, then I would say, don't bother. We'll just accommodate the, the difference. But with such a large fraction of our town at elevated risk. I think it's worth pursuing. And making the argument that with our area sixty-five percent, along with the fall system. There should be an adjustment to the. The number of units. As it is, we'd be asked to increase our population by ten to twenty percent in an eight-year time span. Thank you.
Okay. Sharon, is there another person who would wish us to speak?
Rusty Day.
Rusty.
Thank you. During the last matter. Councilman Als asked a direct question. That relates both to the last matter and importantly to this matter. And the question that he asked, he said he. Heard a lot about the town having authority to designate fire hazard areas in town. Does it have that authority? He asked Cara Silver directly. And the answer to that question is, yes, it does. And that answer is provided in the government code. Section. Fifty-one, one seventy-nine B. Which reads. A local agency may at its discretion include areas within the jurisdiction of the local agency. Not identified as very high fire hazard severity zones by the director. As very high fire hazard severity zones. Following a finding supported by substantial evidence in the record. That the requirements of section fifty-one, one eighty-two are necessary for effective fire protection within the area. So yes, Councilman Als. You do have the authority to designate. High. Fire hazard severity areas in town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question.
There are no additional hands raised. Oh, here we go. We take that back. Kristy Corley.
Kristy.
Hi, thank you for taking my comment. I am for the appeal of the Rena number. Thank you.
Ready? Have any more people decided to ask a question?
There are no additional hands raised. You're driven.
Alrighty, then I will bring it back to the council. And before I bring it back to the council, Cara, could you comment on? Both Bob Turcot and Rusty Days. Comments. Starting with Bob Turcot's, did you remember his question? Okay.
Yes, so. Bob Turcot raised the point that I think what he was arguing was that. Portola Valley does not have sufficient land available to develop the prescribed Rena. And, and because the available land is. Designated not only as very high, but also high fire hazard. And so, you know, I think that that certainly is, is a good point. It, that argument has. Been litigated in Southern California in terms of the appeals in Southern California. And when, it's important when you look at how the, how A BAG employs its, you know. Methodology to allocate these, these housing units to individual cities. They look at a variety of factors. They don't only look at the available land. They look at, you know, the equity factors and the transit and the jobs and it's just, it's not a, a one-to-one correlation in terms of. If you have available land, then you get these units. It's much more complex. It has, you know. Turned into a, a very, very complicated process of allocation and. Available land is certainly one component of it, of the methodology. But what is happening now is that, you know, all cities have made arguments that they're completely built out and they can't accommodate any additional units. And the response from the state is then you need to change the zoning to accommodate more units on a particular piece of land. So in order for an appeal to be successful on the grounds that there is limited land. Because all of the land in Portola Valley, it, it has some kind of fire designation. What we would have to do is show that on all of the other land where there are current houses or. There is current development or if it's not in a, in a, you know, moderate or high fire hazard area. We would have to show why that particular land could not accommodate the Rena. And that's really what HCD is looking for. And all of that needs to be done and that's, that's a, that's a very time-consuming process. That's really the process that you go through in the housing. Element update. You take, you know, you look at each site in the town to determine whether. It can accommodate a, a zoning increase essentially, an upzoning. In terms of. Mr. Day's point that the town has the ability to designate. First he said very high and then he said high. The town has that ability. There has to be substantial evidence in the record to do that. And, you know, at this point, we're waiting for that substantial evidence to come in the form of the CAL FIRE. Maps and we will have very up-to-date information as soon as those maps are published. And I would expect that the community would go through, you know, a, a very comprehensive process to designate. Additional very high and, and high. to designate additional very high and and high fire areas in town. At this point, as I mentioned before, there is not really a legal significance for designating high fire areas in town from a state law perspective, but in terms of long-range planning, it certainly has some merit and the council will take that up, I'm sure, in the safety element discussion that we are embarking on. And I hope that answers the questions.
Okay, thanks, Cara. All right, comments from?
Mayor Derwin.
Looks like Jeremy has his hand up.
Yeah, just wanted to follow up on Cara's comments. Forgotten again. To follow up on Cara's comments, I do want to point out, I read page 130 of the staff report, the discussion of Rancho Santa Margarita's experience. They have much more percentage-wise of of high and very high fire, and that was the response from SCAG, their their version of A-Bag. So I think that that's illustrative of the issue. And I think that, you know, to amplify Cara's point, you know, the the designations, the the maps that are developed by CAL FIRE as it relates to high, moderate, and low, their draft, they're, we could adopt them. The council at the time decided to use the Mertz report as a mechanism to to address some of those issues. And they don't have a legal significance, but they will have airing is it's as part of the process that's coming up, and it will allow the council and the the bodies that will be developing the housing element to have that additional piece of information related to whether or not, you know, zoning issues or otherwise are are addressed in a way that that makes sense for this issue. It's also unnecessary to make that designation at the same time because we're aware of the variety of issues in town that contribute to wildfire concerns. So just wanted to add a little color. Thanks.
Thanks, Sarah.
So the the updated CAL FIRE maps are obviously a really important piece of this puzzle. I mean, it's been, you know, over 10 years, I think, right, since there's been an update? Do we have any, and this might be unprecedented, so we don't know, but is there any recourse as it relates to RENA or the the process? Once we have those updated, you know, maps?
I think that's for you, Cara.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry, Cara, you're like in the hot seat tonight. Everything's coming your way.
Or if you want me to give a non-legal answer first, and then you can think about the legal answer a little bit here. I think we would be remiss not to, after those maps are published, to have a conversation at the council level about next steps, whether or not it's a, there's a legal option or not. As I, as I've said to anybody who will listen to me, it is very frustrating that we have a requirement related to the housing element. And in the middle of this, we're going to get these maps. And we can't slow down the housing element process because especially at the the latter end of it related to the EIR development, that takes a very long time to do. And it's, it's frustrating, as I said. And I think at that time, from again, from a non-legal standpoint, we will bring forward to the council, obviously, what the maps say. And I think the council at that point can can contemplate what message it wants to send to to A-Bag at that at that time. I do not think we're going to be alone in this matter, too, even in San Mateo County. I think Woodside's going to have this issue. I think that Hillsboro could could have this issue to the south in Santa Clara County, a variety of the communities along the coast. San Mateo County may have this issue in certain areas. So we will not be alone. So I think that that will be a point that we're going to want to have continued discussion. Absolutely.
Cara, did you have a legal response?
Yeah, I would just add that the, you know, one of the grounds for appeal is changed circumstances. So if the maps were to come out during, you know, the appeal time period, that would certainly be a legitimate, a legitimate argument to make. It doesn't appear that the maps are going to come out in order for us to to actually, you know, make the appeal in that timeframe. And then the other point is really, again, this, these types of issues come up all the time in long-range planning. There, there's all kinds of data sets that that are important to have when you have your long-range plan. And that's why you you can adopt, you can amend your long-range plan. And so, you know, the housing element, again, it's a planning tool. It doesn't require you to build the units. You could certainly, you know, plan with the information that you have at the time. And then if the maps come out, you may have to amend the plan to refocus housing elsewhere. But it's, it's, these types of of issues do come up in the in the planning process more often than not, unfortunately.
That's helpful. Thank you.
John?
Yeah, I, this is slightly tangential to the RENA subject, but I thought it might be useful to point out the for what what the maps mean in a practical manner to the town. The fact is that we apply the entire town as it's it was high fire, very high fire danger as far as building codes go. And we're increasingly looking at making them even more stringent beyond the current chapter seven requirements of the codes. So I I think we have to just just make sure that everyone understands that, that we are, that we're not we're not ignoring these these issues that that they really apply for the entire town, whether it's high, very high, or moderate fire fire zone. Anyway.
Jeff?
Yeah, um, another potential change circumstance. The State Insurance Commissioner is talking about basically excluding new housing in high fire or very high fire regions from FAIR. And and of course, that would also probably have an effect on people's ability to to get private insurance. At some point, we, you know, we may be planning for houses that become uninsurable. When would be a time we'd go back to HCD and ask for, I mean, it might be after, it might be not happen until after we've, we've had to submit this housing element. When do we go back to HCD and ask for some form of basically relief or consideration, given that, you know, maybe we planned for them, but they can't be built because of, you know, because nobody can get insurance?
Jeremy, are you gonna?
Jeremy?
Yeah, um, thank you to the chair. At least at the A-Bag level, those conversations have already begun. I'm, I was invited recently to participate in a a working group made up of a variety of similarly impacted cities that want to have a conversation about housing and fire. It's a, it's a group that's headed by a former city manager, a consultant basis. And in those conversations, I have, I have raised this issue that that there that if if there isn't coordination between HCD, CAL FIRE, and insurance, that the communities like Portola Valley could end up being insurance ghost towns.
Deserts.
Right, that that it won't be possible to get insurance at all. You know, and and there may be residents who have made that choice already for a variety of reasons. I don't know. But I don't, I don't, it's hard for me to even comprehend if you're, if you're constructing new houses and you buy a new house, a requirement is to have insurance. What does that even mean as it relates to those kinds of issues if you're getting a mortgage and that may not be the case for most people who buy in in Portola Valley? So it was, it was a point that was well-taken by the the group of people discussing it. So I was, I was happy about that.
Commissioner Laura was very, very very sensible to, and we brought it up with him last month. So I I know it's, I know it's out there. I just don't know how it fits into this process.
My, my educated guess is that HCD hasn't had significant conversations related to the insurance issue. I guess they probably see it somewhere outside of their purview. I think it's important that A-Bag starts to consider that. And we've got a mechanism for the town to introduce those ideas. And again, they've been well-received by the the other communities that have been part of that working group.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there other comments? Craig?
I would just like to make the general comment that I don't feel like we should file an appeal. I think our grounds as laid out by Cara, you know, the the grounds for appeal, I don't think we meet. I believe that we could build 253 units in Portola Valley in areas that are not high, very high fire danger. And that the housing element subcommittee will be able to come up with a plan that allows us to do that. And so I I don't think we would prevail on appeal. And I don't think it's worth putting staff time into submitting the appeal and then arguing the appeal. I do think we should monitor other towns' appeals because I wouldn't want our 253 to get bumped up because somebody else submits an appeal. And this, I presume that this would be A-Bag-wide. I mean, there are 110 cities and 11 can, you know, it's a, there are a lot of members of A-Bag. And you could have somebody out in Contra Costa County file an appeal and prevail and get those units reassigned, and they could land on us or some of them could. So I think we need to be observing the appeal process to ensure that we don't get loaded with more. But I I'm pretty sure, as slated by staff, that we would be unsuccessful in in trying to reduce our number.
There is a metric by which it's determined whether the units get distributed countywide or nine-county Bay Area-wide. But I can't recall what that metric is. I don't know if you know it, Laura? Or you know it, Cara? Or you know it, Jeremy? Okay.
It's, appeals are so rare that it it's not something that we, you know, typically have to be concerned about. In San Mateo County, there's, there has been historically a process of the last two cycles where at the subregional level, the cities could talk to one another. So you didn't have an appeal in the end. The, if A-Bag operates the way that they have in the past, at some point, in very short order, they will be loading appeals onto their website. I checked yesterday and I didn't see that link yet. We're obviously in touch with our counterparts in San Mateo County. And I am not aware of one city that is going to appeal. Now, that could change in the last moments, but, you know, the last, the last information that I received, Laura and I received last week, there were a few cities that were unsure, but that it was unsurely in the other way for many of the reasons that we've discussed tonight. The Bay City, many of the Bay City cities were contemplating that related to climate change, sea level rise. And I don't think anyone thought that that would be successful either. As has been discussed tonight, our sense is that HCD and A-Bag would simply say, find another place in your community to put the total number of units. Right or wrong, that's what they're gonna do.
Sarah, is that a new hand up?
Yeah, it is. And I I just didn't know if if you were kind of looking for, I I totally agree with Craig. I would not be supportive of an appeal. My comments were really just about kind of what what happens after we, you know, get the get the fair maps. But I absolutely would not support an appeal. I don't think it would be effective at all.
Jeff, is your new hand up or is that your old hand?
It's a, it's a new hand. I I I wanted to at least consider an appeal. I mean, just partly to make this point about the fire safety. I don't want to, I I I do worry about sort of just the staff time and investment. And I'm just curious, how how onerous would this be for us to file one?
All right, who would like to take that?
Well, just a, I think maybe we can hear from Laura, but just could we do something, you know, similar to what we did last time where John and I, with staff's help, wrote a letter? You know, if if the goal is to draw attention to the issue rather than, I I'm not sure, Jeff, if your intention is that you think we would have, that we would prevail rather than just air the issue. But if it's just to air the issue, you could file a letter and say, this is her appeal, and they'll reject it, but they'll at least have read it.
Yeah, I I I do agree with you. I think it's unlikely to to bring us more than, you know, very cursor relief, if any. You know, I I do kind of feel like I it just, it feels like a matter of principle. I mean, I feel like this, just, you know, we're not unique in this, but just bringing up this question about fire and just, if it was going to get A-Bagged or just think about this fire question again, I'd be willing to do something as long as it wasn't going to just be, you know, become a huge burden on staff. That'd be my biggest downside for that.
Through the chair, I I think that you know, I think you certainly can see that from, from where we sit, you know, that in the information we've provided, you guys have reached a conclusion related to the the success of appeal. I think the staff agrees with that assessment. Well, I think there's also a sense that that there aren't grounds currently to have a successful appeal. I think that can, so this might not be the vehicle to continue to share the town's concerns related to to fire issues. And I think we're all interested in hearing from the council on alternative ways to continue that conversation. You know, certainly from a staff-to-staff level, there, as I said, I've been involved in a working group that's getting stuff back to A-Bag that I think is going to be helpful here. And, you know, the the tenor of the of the letter that John and Jeff put together last year, I think, was was appropriate. You know, I'm I'm aware of one Bay Area city that put together a very strongly worded letter that ended up with units. The, you know, so that doesn't seem like a good approach. And it's just very clear that 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 HCD is operating in an environment where they expect resiliency, home hardening, defensible space efforts. I mean, the same way that they've approached earthquakes for, I think, the entire time we've had this, these cycles. So to 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 the, I think, to this part of the conversation, I think that continued engagement through the council is an important message to send, both practically, that there are concerns that we continue to have, and how do we have the engagement? What does that look like? And I think it's also important to to, as a symbolically on some level, that 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 the residents who have been participating in these conversations over the for the last number of months understand the council's position on the matter, too. So, I mean, and staff would be happy to support the production of those materials. Hope that's helpful.
It is. Thank you.
materials?
A a letter, conversations with with A-Bag, HCD, others. You know, on our, one of the things that that's on Laura and our to-do list is that for the first time, we have, we know the person at HCD to have a conversation with. That's not, that that's not happened before. So developing a relationship with that person, inviting them to our community, talking to them about the the, you know, the COVID subsiding in a way that we think we can have more of this kind of person-to-person engagement. That's something we want to do. But I think the council plays the most important role here in in messaging that and having further engagements with, you know, peer-to-peer elects and higher-up appointments.
John?
I I would be interested in in pursuing that kind of outreach. I think I would not be in favor of an appeal. I think the most, at most, we would just get ridicule and being who we are in the comparison of the numbers that we have compared to all the cities around us. It would just look ridiculous. So I don't, I don't think an appeal, given, given the realities that Cara has outlined, makes any sense at all. But I do agree that keeping this in in their in the forefront, keeping, reaching out to the to HCD and A-Bag and making sure they under bugging them, because it's a, it's a definitely a region-wide issue. And we've got, we've got some kind of resolution has to come through, especially before the the insurance apocalypse hit. So I think it makes a lot of sense to keep, to go that route.
Okay.
Mayor Derwin, there is a member of the public who wishes to speak, even though that we've closed out that portion of the meeting. Do you wish to? Sharon, you got it?
Well, thank you so much. I felt sheepish raising my hand. Thank you. I was just gonna volunteer to write the letter for you. I would be happy to spare staff time work. So if that's the barrier, please tap me and I'll help out. Palo Alto, Cupertino, Belmont and Burlingame are all appealing. And the expectation is many more municipalities will, as well. I really don't think we should not appeal simply because we're worried that we might get laughed at. But my reason for raising my hand, please tap me and I would be delighted to help out. Thank you.
I have, I know people on Burlingame and Belmont councils, and I have not heard that. So that is news to me. Palo Alto, I know, is appealing. So I've been doing this for sixteen years. I've been doing the housing stuff. I mean, I've been out there as a affordable housing advocate for a really long time. I've paid a, a really high price for that. But I, the thing that I think needs to happen is we've got HCD. We've got, excuse me, Cal Fire, and we've got the insurance industry. And no one's talking to the other. So we get conflicting advice. We've got insurance companies dropping people. I was dropped two times in a year. Not talking to HCD, who is mandating housing, not talking to Cal Fire, who should be giving us a map that is the map. This is, this is the map you refer to. These are the areas that are high, very high, exceptional. None of that's together yet. That's what we need to focus on getting all those people together. That's what I think we need to do. I can tell you right now, if we appeal, we will lose. I know people on the methodology committee. I remember talking to them about it. I know a person who is now on the appeals board for the nine-county Bay Area. I told, I talked to him about the fire. He laughed at me and he said, you will be denied because unless you can prove that every single inch of Portola Valley is such high fire danger that you cannot build there, we will say, build in an area that is not high fire danger. That is what they will say. So if we appeal, we are wasting our time. I don't care if we're laughed at. We would be. We have been. But it is, it is not going to be effective. What is effective is working with the insurance industry, working with Cal Fire, working with HCD, and continuing to make our homes more resilient, continuing to work on defensible space, continuing to harden gnomes, continuing to do everything we need to do, you know, develop evacuation plans, all of that, all the things we're doing. We just need to double down and do more of, because no matter what happens, we need to do that. So that's, that's how I feel about this. I, yeah, no, nobody's happy about two hundred and fifty-three houses in eight years. But as Cara and Laura, Laura point out, this is a planning tool. This is not a mandate to build two hundred and fifty-three units. And sometime in the eight years, starting at twenty twenty-three, things are going to change. And I believe there will be new laws that say you cannot build in these areas. And there will be those areas in Portola Valley. But not all of Portola Valley. And I don't think we want all of Portola Valley to be a no-build zone. Because I think that'd be a little problematic for those of us who, people who want to do ADUs or want to enlarge their homes. So I am a no thank you to the appeal because it won't be, it won't, will be denied. And a yes, if you want to send a letter, I'm not sure whom you want to send it to. You know, to just get the conversation going, you know, we're, we're facing this extraordinary challenge. Please know what it's like here. So Craig?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think as Jeremy pointed out, that process has already begun, I think. And we've had conversations with Senator Becker, with Assemblyman Berman, with, you know, at the elected level. And then, as Jeremy said, he's, he's, he and Laura and our staff are doing a bunch of outreach at the staff level as well to, to really, you know, get these issues out there. And, and I think where we are facing people saying, oh, yeah, I'm not of that, and, and starting to consider it and starting to integrate it into their, their, their thoughts and their next round of processing. So, you know, for some of these issues, it may be a little bit late for the cycle and for this RENA appeal process. And we'll have to do the best we can. And, yeah, through the eight-year cycle, this is going to continue to evolve. So just because we submit our, our housing element by January first, twenty twenty-three, doesn't mean it's gonna be the same housing element that we have in place in twenty thirty-one. I'm sure there'll be adjustments.
Yes, there will be. Are there other, we don't need, oh, before I talk to you, Jeremy, Cara, do we need any kind of a motion on this one? Or is it just staff direction?
No, this is just a discussion and an opportunity for you to provide direction to staff if you had any.
Okay.
Mayor Derwin, we do have another public speaker if you would like them to speak.
Is it someone who hasn't spoken yet?
Kristi Corley.
Yes, she can, because she had a very, very short comment earlier. Yes.
Okay, Kristi?
Yes, I was at the A-BAG meeting when they added equity in. And there was four equity nonprofit associations, but no city officials to really talk for them, their cities. And I thought that was odd. It was one of the first meetings I attended. So I just want to say that. And I think it caught the cities off guard and I left the meeting and I made some phone calls to cities to let them know that their numbers just went up. And I had no idea that Portola Valley went up because they did not list Portola, Portola Valley at the time. So that's one thing. And I do believe this is just a letter and a lawyer letter. And it's worth a try. It's not a lawsuit. It's not going to cost us a ton of money. It's, it's writing a letter and doing the best we can with it. Thank you.
Alrighty. Jeremy, is your hand up?
Yeah, I was gonna make a, just a suggestion. I wanted to preface this with the, with the comment. You know, from the conversation that, that I participated in with the Insurance Commissioner a month ago, that it included two other jurisdictions at our invitation. And Jeff was there in, in Mary Ann. It was my impression from, from the months I spent asking for this meeting and getting it ready, that we were the first to ever have this kind of dialogue with, with the Insurance Commissioner about these issues. And I think it's candidly really important to note in the record that the town has had multiple engagements and interactions as it relates to the concerns that, that we all share about this topic. And that, that the council has directed staff on multiple occasions to do things, have those conversations that have not been had before. And we continue to be a leader here in this regard. So I think it's really important to say. My suggestion is that, that the, the council direct was Craig and Jeff, Craig and John to, you know, work with staff is appropriate to put together a letter outside of the, the appeal process and/or other types of engagements with A-BAG and HCD over the coming period of time to further discuss and illustrate the concerns related to what's been discussed, what, what's been offered tonight.
Okay, I think that's good. I also wanted to make one other point. Fizzler, One Shoreline, has sort of added wildfire to its charge. I think that's in an attempt to try to gain the support of some of the uphill communities like Woodside. But that also shows you that wildfire is really starting to be of importance in San Mateo County. And that's why when they had that last panel, they included me and Jeremy. Yes, Craig?
Yeah, I was just gonna suggest to Jeremy's point that, you know, what we might do, I, I, I think when John and I did the letter writing last time at the council's request, I think we, it was, it was, you know, our, our purview was very specifically limited to that. I think the agenda item for today was to have a discussion about this, not necessarily to form a new subcommittee to do anything, but maybe we could agendize for our next council meeting to form a subcommittee along the lines that Jeremy laid out to kind of continue carrying this forward and continue engagement with the state and with our neighbors and with the county and other jurisdictions to, to keep these issues moving forward.
Yeah, I think that sounds great.
It's a great idea.
So we already have a subcommittee? Correct?
No, I think, I don't, I don't think that the subcommittee we created last time was chartered with a broad enough mandate. So I think we should probably revisit it at our next meeting.
Okay. Right, anything else?
I don't think you're gonna be there.
Well, that's right.
It makes it easier. If you guys want to appoint me, then I won't be able to.
Guess, guess whose job that's gonna be?
Can you electronically do something so we can have your head there, even though you're not live?
I'll, I'll send Jeremy something he can use as a background image for Zoom thing. I'll be over his shoulder.
Yeah, we can get a little AI voice, you know, a little.
That's, that's not creepy. That's not weird. All right, we'll get on the July fourteenth agenda for the direction of the council.
All right, thank you. The three of us will be left. We'll be very happy to discuss that. Okay, now we are on to fireworks. What about fireworks? Item number thirteen, recommendation by town attorney, first reading of ordinance, adding chapter eight point three six two, title, can't even see that anymore. Title eight, banning fireworks in town and setting administrative fines. Cara?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is a very short item. As mentioned in the staff report, the County of San Mateo recently updated its fireworks ordinance. The impetus for updating the, the county's ordinance was to add an administrative penalty provision in response to repeated fireworks issues in portions of the county. Portola Valley has not had significant fireworks problems in the past. We do not have our own ordinance, but we have a, an ordinance that is, that was adopted by the fire district and is enforced by the fire district. When we saw the county's ordinance come through, it gave us an opportunity to take a fresh look at this. And we thought that even though we don't currently have an issue since fire hazard is such an important issue to this community and will only continue to, to be an important issue, that it was prudent for us to have our own ordinance. The ordinance that the county has prepared is a bit broader than the fire district ordinance. It includes all aspects of fireworks issues from the sale and the offering of the sale of fireworks to possession to the use of fireworks. And then it also gives the town staff the ability to enforce the ordinance and it provides for an administrative penalty as opposed to your typical ordinance, which only provides a criminal penalty, which is a misdemeanor or a significant fine. So we are moving forward this, this ordinance with a recommendation that we adopt this ordinance, even though we don't currently have a particular problem in town. We thought that it would be good to have this as an additional tool in case we started to have a problem occur. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions? Craig?
Why is the fine level set so low? If somebody were to set off a firework in town, start a fire, burn down a house or a neighborhood, they would be facing a maximum fine of a thousand dollars or six months in jail under this ordinance. Is there, is there a reason that you set the number so low relative to the severity of what the consequence of doing of setting off fireworks in town would be?
Right. So that's a good question. The, there is a debate about whether cities have the ability to set penalties in excess of a thousand dollars. A thousand dollars is typically the, the maximum penalty that you can impose as a infraction penalty. And so there is a sort of a, a, two different schools of thought. There's another school of thought that does allow for higher penalties. So the county took the more conservative approach in this, in this instance. It's up to the council. If, if you wanted to go higher, that's, that's certainly fine as well.
Thank you.
Are there any other hands up, questions? All right, Sharon, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
There are no hands raised at this time.
Okay, back to the council. Is anyone interested in increasing the thousand-dollar fine? And Craig?
Yes, I would much rather see it, I don't know, something more substantial like ten thousand. I mean, I, I look at a thousand-dollar fine relative to six months in jail and relative to the severity of the consequences of recklessly setting off fireworks in a town that has, has been mentioned multiple times through this meeting, has a lot of high fire and very high fire severity zones. And I think really a thousand-dollar fine is just inadequate.
And Cara, can we do that?
So as I mentioned, I, there, I, I think are two perspectives on this. And I think I, I'm comfortable with arguing that as long as it's not considered, you know, unduly burdensome or confiscatory, confiscatory, that it is appropriate in this circumstance to have that level of a fine.
And, and really, the, the, the one that I'm particularly looking at is the one in section four, which is that not the administrative citation, but the misdemeanor and the limit on the misdemeanor fine. I'm, I'm happy with the one in, in subsection three, the administrative citation staying at a thousand dollars. And the one for the misdemeanor is a fine of not more than. So if we set that to a higher number like ten thousand dollars, if there were particular circumstances where as a kid set off a firecracker and it didn't set fire to anything, then yeah, you don't find them ten thousand dollars for that necessarily, but that the, the, the maximum limit could be higher.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would have to look at that issue. I think that, that, that misdemeanor is, is a state law provision. It's only, we only have flexibility on the administrative fines that are levied by the, the town. The misdemeanor penalties are, are levied by the court.
Okay.
But are they not, they're not levied by the court based on the tax of the ordinance? You'd have to check.
Correct. I, I believe it's under state law. I think that's the, the default, but I would have to check.
But I think we want to get this passed tonight, right? Since.
Yeah, can, can we, can we, can we, I mean, this is, would be a first reading tonight. Are we waiving the second reading here?
We're waving the second.
So it would take.
No, we're not waving.
So, so this is coming back anyway. So, so could we bring, could you check that and bring it back for that second reading?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Good. How do people feel about that? John?
Yeah, I'm okay with that. I, I think it's, we need to get it going.
Good, yeah.
I'm fine with seeking the higher penalty and I'm fine with, with just hashing that up for the next reading, yes.
Sarah?
Same.
Okay, so is there a motion to? Am I looking at it? Where is it? Introduce and waive, oh, so we're not waived for the, okay, what should the motion say, Cara? Introduce and waive, oh, so we're not waived for the, okay, what should the motion say, Cara?
Yes, it's to introduce and waive the, the entire reading of the ordinance. That's why we read it that way. So you don't have to read the entire ordinance tonight. But you adopt the, the ordinance and then you would conduct a second reading at the following meeting. And I'd suggest that you, that you pass this ordinance tonight with the ten thousand dollar fine. And then if it proves that you can't do that, then we would make an adjustment on the second reading.
So I would make that motion with the amendments to change the misdemeanor fine to ten thousand dollars.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Jeff seconded it. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please, Sharon.
Councilmember Alfs.
Hi.
Councilmember Wernikoff.
Hi.
Councilmember Richards.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hughes.
Hi.
Mayor Druin.
Hi. Thank you. Item number fourteen is a colleague's memo from Councilmember Wernikoff regarding a six PM start time for town council meetings. Sarah?
Yeah, so I just, you know, since I joined the council, I've been wondering why the, the meetings started so late. And there might be rationale to that, that I'm interested in learning about tonight. But just given how long these meetings can go sometimes, I think we're on, you know, past three and a half hours at this point. The meetings just get really late. Obviously for me today on the East Coast, it's almost two AM. So I should have brought this up a couple of weeks ago. But, uh, yeah, I've since learned also that Menlo Park starts at five o'clock, Palo Alto starts at six o'clock. I would love to even start at five. I don't know that that's reasonable for people with work conflicts and that kind of thing. But would love to at least see it start an hour earlier, given how long the meetings go and the amount of interest we're having. Just to get the meetings done before, you know, eleven, when we can.
Okay, before I hear from all of you, I, I did a little survey. So out of the twenty cities, one starts at five o'clock, Menlo Park. Four start at six o'clock, Atherton Hills, Borough, Redwood City, South San Francisco. Two start at six thirty, East Palo Alto and Foster City. Twelve start at seven. I'm not going to read them all. But it also includes Woodside. And one starts at seven thirty Brisbane. And I'd also like to say that when I came on the council in two thousand and five, the meeting started at eight o'clock. And I tried to change them and it didn't work. And then when Anne Wengert was elected, maybe it was a maybe a year after she was elected, we were able to get them changed to seven thirty. And then when Jeff came on board, we were able to move it to seven, right, Jeff? When you came on board?
I don't remember if I was the one doing it.
That's the history.
I started at seven thirty and then we went to seven shortly after that.
Right, right. Okay, so comments, questions, excuse me. Does anyone have a question of Sarah? Okay, are there any people in the public who would like?
Anyone still here?
What?
Anyone still here?
Does anyone wish to comment? Nope.
No hands raised.
Okay, back to the council for comments. Craig?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I find seven borderline difficult to make most meetings. You know, when I am working, I try and wrap up by five. That generally means I end up leaving the office by, when I'm in an office, by, uh, you know, five fifteen, if I'm lucky, five thirty, most of the time. That gets me home by six. I then have to start cooking dinner, eat it, feed my family and, you know, get set up for the meeting. And to get all of that done by seven, I end up, most meetings you may have seen recently, turning off my camera once or twice early on as I'm picking food out of my teeth that I've just finished scarfing. It, 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 it would be very difficult for me to, to do six o'clock. And I would end up missing the start of many meetings probably.
Okay. John?
Uh, I'm probably could make it work, but the dinner thing is a problem and have to eat during dinner during ma- meeting probably. Like Craig says, and I mean, shutting off the camera because I find it really disgusting to watch people eat on Zoom. But, uh, yeah, I, I, I probably could make it work, but I'd rather not.
Okay. Jeff?
I think I could probably make six o'clock work and I actually wouldn't mind being done earlier. I mean, the rationale we've talked about in the past for keeping them later is so that people, the public could, I mean, especially when we were meeting in person, a lot of people were saying they couldn't get out of, get away from their work. We, we've kept it later, I think, so that people, you know, more people could, we were trying to encourage more attendance. Maybe there's more flexibility out there in the public now. Like I said, I, I personally would probably be fine with six o'clock and it would be nice to get done a little earlier. I, I, I mean, I understand people's difficulty in making these meetings. And I, I, I'm guessing that a lot of the public probably has a little easier time, like, like some of us has an easier time making a seven o'clock meeting on six o'clock meeting, so.
Okay, I, first of all, usually the way we do this is we do it in half hour increments. So I think jumping from seven to six would be really tough. When I'm not mayor, I would love six o'clock. When I am mayor, I really like having the extra time, but since I won't be mayor very much longer. But I too remember that the rationale for seven was working people and Craig says he can't make it work. So I, here's one idea though. So when I was looking at all the other communities, all the other cities and their start times. And by the way, the really early start time people go really late. They have six hour meetings. I've seen East Palo Alto have a seven hour meeting. Anyway, some of them start earlier when there is a closed session. They put the closed session up front. Or if there's a study session. And if we know in advance it's going to be a really long meeting, we could do that. Or we could maybe get a little bit more input from the community and see whether there would be any appetite to move it earlier. Craig?
Yeah, I think other solutions like that, I'm very appreciative, Sarah, of, of your desire to keep meetings long. And I think, um, you know, I think to, to some degree, you know, better agenda planning maybe might help with that, have fewer items that we need to get through. If we have, if we know we're going to have a big, long agenda starting earlier that I can work around because I can let people know, hey, you know, this, this Wednesday, I'm going to be leaving the office early or whatever I need to do to make that work. That's, that's doable. But doing it on a regular basis would be tough. The other possibility is to have special meetings. You know, if, if we have a really packed agenda, we could have a special meeting on the intervening, well, I guess Wednesdays are hard, maybe because the planning commissions meets on the opposite Wednesdays. But there, there are potentially other ways that we could break things up or start earlier on specific tough days if we, if there's a lot of stuff to get through to, to split it up a bit more.
I guess it seems like people would have a hard, I would think the public, it would be harder to have an inconsistent meeting time, to have it changing. I think that would probably be harder from an accessibility standpoint.
That could be.
I've eaten dinner throughout every meeting since I joined council, by the way. There's no way I'm able to like do that with my schedule either, guys, so. But, uh, yeah, so there, we can't even move it up. Would there be, to your point, Marianne, about a thirty minute increment? Would there be any interest in that? I guess is one question. And then the second is, how do, could we manage the agenda a little tighter so we don't have meetings that go over three hours? I mean, I think going.
That isn't the Portola Valley way. When I was, when I came on and they started at eight, we
Changed though.
Always went to eleven, usually sometimes twelve, sometimes one. I mean, yeah, I can tighten up the agenda. I would, I used to do that at C CAG. I got everybody out almost every time in two hours. But I think I'll be highly criticized if I do that by the community. What do you?
Wha- what I, what I, what I might propose is we, why don't we try working on it? I mean, generally, you know, the, the mayor and vice mayor and the town manager, we, we have weekly calls where we look at the role forward and figure out how to shuffle agendas and what's going to land where. You know, I think we can, we've, 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 I think recently been sort of consolidating things. And this tends to happen in the summer because there, people are out of town. And so you're canceling meetings and you're trying to figure out how to get more stuff done. I think we've had a particularly heavy agenda load as well. Sarah, since you've started, we've just had a lot of big items with COVID, with housing, with fire issues. There's just a bit of budget. We've, there's just been a sequence of stuff. This, it's not been the pattern as much. I think the, the prior years that I've been on the council, there've been, but there've been peaks and valleys for sure. There definitely been times where we've had individual meetings that run long. I think it's been much more so recently than, than the sort of longer, longer arc. But I, I, I would say there's probably more that we could do without Marianne getting to the two, you know, forcing everything to two hours where we could maybe reach some kind of a happy compromise. And, and if we, if we try and focus a little more attention on that for the next month or two, maybe we can revisit this and see whether it's working or not. And if not, then, you know, I think it would be, it would be reasonable to look at other options.
At C CAG, I had a time to agenda. So I just move people. I just say, we're moving on now. And that's with twenty-one board members. Jeremy?
Just a, a few comments. I, I think that I think agenda management can help to only a certain extent. And I don't want to hang too much on that premise. And this is meant in the spirit of the conversation that we're, we're having right now. In the five years that I've been with the town, the amount, the sheer amount of work has increased. The number of issues that are important to the council, that are important to the community, that are important to our committees, has increased. And the trade off is going to be that issues will take longer to come to fruition at the council for shorter meetings. So if the council's comfortable with that, then I, I, I'm happy to participate in that, that level of conversation. But I think it also is one of those things that candidly tends to unravel over time because there's interest by individual and collective council members, by the community and others as it relates to a variety of issues. So I think that ultimately what ends up happening is you go back to longer meetings because there's a lot of stuff that people want to get done i- as quickly as possible. Every issue becomes the priority issue depending on who you are, right? So I, I think that, I think agenda management is good about this much. And then I think it, it starts to fall apart a bit afterwards. I think it was my primary point. I'll stop there. Thanks.
Right, I don't want to belabor this. It sounds like the majority is not interested in changing it. So this is a perfect way to manage the agenda to just move on, not.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that's quite correct. I think I'm the one who doesn't want to do it. I think the other, others were pretty open, so I, um, but, but before.
I think John and Marianne sounded like they weren't in favor of changing it.
I, I would like more input from the community and I would want to go half hour, not an hour.
I, I could do a half hour.
It'd be fun without.
But if it's really going to be a burden for Craig, I mean, he's one fifth of us.
I, what, what I would suggest is let, let's, let's try harder for a month or two and see if we get what we need to get. If we don't, then let's, let's revisit six thirty or six. Does that work, Sarah?
Sure. Revisit in the fall.
Yeah.
And maybe talk around in the community and ask people, do you care? I think when virtual, I, I don't think it's that much of a hardship, but when we go back in person.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's what I'm specifically thinking about more is, you know, yeah, you can have a, a bowl of cereal off to the side of your computer screen when you're on Zoom and then take bites in between things. When you turn your camera off, it's harder to do that at the day.
Well, a, a lot of the.
That's what the candy's for.
Yeah, the candy helps.
Right, Jeremy?
I'm sorry, Marianne, I didn't hear you.
Serve dinner when they meet really early.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, I, I work in organizations where that's normal. I understand that I, you know, I haven't had in-depth conversations around this with my, with my colleagues in other cities. But, um, and this will be a challenge when we move to, to hybrid. But right now they take dinner breaks.
Yeah.
Some cities. So, I mean, I, I think I, I, you know, at least, at least from, from, from the staff managing aspects of this, moving it forward and, and, et cetera. It's, it, it sounds like that we want to have some level of engagement with the community, but this is not off the table by, by any means. For what it's worth, staff would be supportive of an earlier start time.
Yes, I know that. Okay, alrighty. We will revisit this in the fall. Council liaison reports. Sarah, since you get to go to, to sleep after this.
Mine is pretty short. We had a CAC meeting. There wasn't a lot new there. You know, the date is still October ninth for the Live Revive. They just were talking about contracts and stage location and stuff like that. And they are optimistically planning potentially for a August summer concert series given the improvements with all of the COVID regulations. ASCC meeting was very straightforward. There was an approval of a, of a project as well as, as we mentioned earlier. They stuck with their original recommendation for the ad hoc housing committee. And the, and the only other two updates are just PVSD, you know, has started their construction. I think they've been communicating pretty well with the community about that through PV Forum. And my understanding as far as Sequoias goes, that their fire mitigation cleanup starts tomorrow. So I think that's the big update from them.
Okay, thank you and good night.
Good night, guys.
Night.
Later.
Okay, who's next?
I can go. Got Emergency Services Council last week. It was a little sort of a quorum draw, but we managed to get enough people. And then Jonathan Cox of Cal Fire gave a presentation on the upcoming fire season. Setting the very low soil, soil moisture, lower, lower than I think they've seen in maybe ever this time of year. It's basically similar to what it will be, what it would be a couple of months from now in a normal year. There were some changes to firefighting equipment for our region. Our aircraft, I guess, comes from up from Hollister, if we need, need an air tanker. Helicopter has been moved to Moffett Field, which is closer to the east, so that's good. And there are currently twenty-three air tankers in the fleet and they continue to build out zoning. So that's all going on as hoped. We have budget, adopted a new budget for this coming year and provided approval for a fleet of drones for the fire department to search and rescue and firefighting. Study that kind of thing, so. Then I had the Conservation Committee meeting last night. Some discussion about potentially having the Conservation Committee stress tree protection for oaks as it relates to new construction. Not sure where that one came from. It was from a, anyway, that's something that will be discussed further. Discussion, more discussion on the redwood tree at the forestation. Which I think they're going to write a letter to or, or bring it up again with a blend, I'm not sure who they're planning on talking to. But they don't want to let that one go. Tidy Trail, there was work on Tidy Trail for clearing and apparently they did a pretty messy job of taking out the trees and brush that they cut and dug up the ground, made left big ruts. Needs to be a, some kind of pre, pre-agreement on how, how they're going to leave these places once they're, when, when they're working on fire and scenic cleanup. And then there was some question about mowing it for. And then there was, um, some question about mowing at Ford Field in the open space area, uh, that was only done partly and when. There was, people were wondering why it wasn't completed, uh, maybe it has been by now, so that was it.
Alrighty. Who would like to go next? Jeff.
Uh, Nature and Science met on the tenth, um, they're planning, trying to plan more of their, their, their webinar series, which seems to be going very well. Um, that same night, they had, uh, uh. Rob, Robert Beiler. Local professor, uh, geology professor, talking about earthquake prediction. Apparently, I, I wasn't able to watch that one at a conflict, but apparently it got Zoom bombed. But they were actually able to sort of, uh, restart the meeting with a new link and send it out, so they actually, they, they. The, the committee did a really good job apparently of, of getting around this, this, you know, Zoom bomb disruption of their, their, uh, webinar and. Actually got almost everybody back on the new link and, uh, and got it, finished it, so, um. I, it get very popular, the webinar and, uh, they're planning, trying to plan a few more of them. Monday, I sat in on the, uh, circ meeting, uh, Mary Ann will probably tell you more about the whole meeting. I had a conversation with a couple of committee members just about. Um, electrification, um, sort of the rationale behind building electrification, um. Now Stefan Unash raised some really interesting points about just, just the overall kind of benefits of it, um, I think they had a good conversation about kind of. PCE's long-term plans and vision for, for what electrification will look like and, and just, just general greening of the grid itself. Is, is kind of, uh, making the, the electrification itself more beneficial and. I guess the main thing I said is that when we talk about sort of requiring all electric new construction, we're thinking about the next, you know. Ten, twenty, thirty years, the life of these structures and keeping gas out of new buildings for, you know. For a long time, to a point when we know the entire grid will be much cleaner, so, um. But there's a lot of just interesting questions that come up during that conversation, so I thought we had a good talk on Monday. That's, uh, that's what, that's what I have right now.
Ready, Craig?
Uh, yep, I had two, um. Planning Commission last week, uh, they discussed the fire station, Fire Station Eight. Um, most of the discussion there was around the, um, parking onsite, uh, in the new configuration. Um, and the impact on the redwood tree, the big redwood tree in front of the building, uh, which is proposed to be removed. And so the planning commission ended up continuing that to their next meeting. Uh, they wanted to get a little more information from the applicants on. Um, possible alternatives that might reduce the parking or save the tree or both. Um, and, um, I, I think they hopefully providing a little more far staff will provide a little more follow-up information to the applicant on exactly. What they want to see, I wasn't super clear on it myself, having attended the meeting. A lot of materials were presented in the meeting, I think they wanted basically what was said in the meeting to be written down and, and part of the written application or something. Um, so that will come back to them next meeting. Um, and then a meeting of the, uh, W H R M D R A C. Woodside Highlands Road Main and District Residence Advisory Committee, um, they discussed their. Uh, budget for the coming year, um, which didn't get to staff in time for consent tonight, so it'll probably be on the next consent agenda. Well, that was pretty straightforward, it's basically just rolling over this year. And, um. The other item there that's of interest is, um, the bus shelter that's down kind of. Near the bottom of Santa Maria Road, right at the entrance to town, that's kind of got grass growing on the roof and. That structure is kind of falling apart, the roof and some of the wood in there, um, is in serious need of repair. Um, and, um, it's not technically part of the Woodside Highlands Road Main and District, but it's right next to them and they're all very familiar with it. Um, it's on town land, um, and so. Uh, they are going to be coordinating with staff on figuring out how to get a PB Donates project together to. Rehabilitate that structure. And, uh, apparently it was, it was, there was a Sunset Magazine article about it and there's a whole thing about when it was put in in the first place, it was a. Collaboration essentially between the residents of. The, um, Woodside Highlands who paid for it and did a lot of the work to put it together and the town to, to get it installed there, so there's some. There's some, uh, local sentimental value as well as it being a sort of landmark at the entrance to town that. Argues in favor of keeping it, you know, more, more or less with the current aesthetics, but just. So it won't fall on someone's head and walks under it someday. Um, that was it, those were my two meetings.
Okay, I have, I don't know, four or five. So the dogs decide to bark right now. All right, C K. Let me see, we had, I think we had an update from. We met the new Caltrans District Four Director and I cannot tell you how many questions people had for. But all their little axes to grind in their cities. Um, and then we had a presentation, um, kind of an update from Twenty One Elements, I think it was Josh and. Somebody else, I can't remember who it was. Okay, then we did. It's always old news by the time it gets to you guys. Uh, they were working on the May revise, uh, the budget is due June fifteen. They assume that the joint ledge budget proposal will be sent to the governor by June twelve or thirteen, then he'll look at it and. You know, he can do line items, there's still trailer bills to be considered. There's in fact a cap and trade trailer bill, and then there were some bills of interest to C K and we approved. A support letter on AB one seventeen, which has to do with eBay, e-bike incentive program. What else? Okay, then we did the final twenty twenty-one C K. San Mateo County Comprehensive Bike and Pedestrian Plan. Then we did our measure M allocations, um, this is the ten dollar per motor vehicle. That we, um, get every year and it's the plans reviewed every five years, we change some of the allocations. Not for the cities, the allocations for the county. What else? God, there was a lot of people talking at this meeting, it was, it was kind of a, a little bit of an out of control, chaotic meeting. What was the last thing? So I've kind of blocked it from my memory. Uh, then we approved the budget, then we had a closed session to. We were supposed to approve the contract for the new ED, but for some reason we couldn't do that. And instead, we just looked at the contract, it's going to come back in July. And there was one board member, and you can actually ask me offline about this. Who was, hmm, a little altered and she actually started attacking the chair, it was really something to watch. So that was that meeting, and then the express lanes, I think that was a pretty fast one. We adopted our fiscal year budget, we went through the mechanics of. Authorizing, um, the amendments between, excuse me, yeah. Amendments, cooperative funding agreements with C K and with the TA. Then we reviewed and approved the resolution adopting the ordinance, the toll ordinance, I think I talked about that last month. For the express lanes and we're basically keeping. Things consistent with the other express lanes, at least through Santa Clara County, so that people. Don't suddenly go into a new county and have different pricing. And then we elected a new chairperson, Diane Pappan and a new vice chairperson, Rico Medina. See, the library, let's see, we approved our budget. There was a director report, the new Brisbane libraries open and. The architects who designed the Brisbane Library are the same ones who designed our, our whole town center. The Atherton Library is still in progress, Pacifica and East Palo Alto want to build new libraries. Talked about they're phased in reopening, they're going to keep phase three through July. And then they will, they'll back, be back to the new normal based on the state guidelines. But they think they're going to have to be in masks for quite a while because they serve children and a lot of the children aren't vaccinated. They, uh, big push for summer camps on library sites. There is a lot of learning to be made up after the COVID year, as you can imagine. We elected for a second term Ruben Holger as chair and Sarah McDowell as vice chair. Sustainability Committee was actually a really good meeting, Tom Francis from Boska came and gave a report on. Um, what, I don't remember what it was called. Update in regional water supply and it was comprehensive, as you know, we're pretty good in Hachachi. For another year, but that is not true of the state, the state is in really bad shape. And there's mandatory rationing happening all over. Right now, we're still voluntary, that could change next year if we have another dry year, definitely be mandatory. Uh, just a lot of very grim news, he did talk about. The, um. So the S F P C is asking its wholesale customers to hold the water use to the two thousand nineteen levels during the peak summer months. But it's a voluntary call. And as a reminder, in the two thousand fifteen sixteen drought, Cal Water Bear Gulch District did a thirty-four percent reduction, so if we have to do it, we can do it. But not this year, and then he talked a lot about big projects for water supply that are happening, which I remember. Were in the works at, during the last drought and then they suddenly disappeared. So Daly City has a recycled water project, Crystal Springs has a purif- uh, purified water, maybe that's the Daly City one. I can't remember, there's a number of little projects throughout the county, there's some surface storage. Um, there's a D cell project, Bay Area Brackish Water. And, but the future, which I'm really glad to hear, they're finally saying it, is treating wastewater, you know, taking wastewater and treating it. To become drinking water, that's the future, it's all going to be that. The most environmental opposition is to the D cell and I guess it's the harm to the environment. I don't know a lot about that, but all these projects take a long time. And what else do we talk about? I'm just gonna look at the, this. The, yes, there were, Jeff did a really good job on his. Discussion about the pros and cons of electrification and the mark of success was that Stefan was really happy. And that's rare to see Stefan happy. Um, there was a survey that went out about the book club, the, um, climate change book club, so they had a lot of data and they're going to try to. Take the data to figure out the perfect way to do the book club. They want to change their meeting to a Thursday evening and they are going to do it, it'll be the third, I think it's the third Thursday of the month. Seven o'clock, but they won't do that until August, because there's already speakers for July. Anyway, I have to say Walt's doing a really good job running these meetings and I don't know, he's doing a great job with the agenda too. And then Jeremy, if he's still there, Jeremy Brandy and I had a. Telephone meeting with, or Zoom meeting with Dawn. At Cal Water and then this other Cal Water guy who does AMI, I can't remember his name, do you remember Steve? Something, so it was just talking about all that they've got to do to get AMI, the smart meters in place, there's a. Whole bunch of infrastructure and this is the first time they've done it, but it's going to be happening. And I think it was Jeremy's suggestion, which is a great one, is let's check in like every couple of months. Wasn't that your suggestion? And that is it. So now Jeremy's report.
Starting on that item, just to add some additional, um, color, it, it didn't, uh, sound to us. That the AMI program, the smart water meter program, uh, for Portola Valley would start. In any considerable fashion this calendar year, just from a staffing perspective and other things, so I'm just setting expectations on. What my next. Um, on timing wise, so the big item in the last few days is, uh, West Bay Sanitary District, um, they. Um, their general manager contacted me Thursday. Um, related to two items that were on tonight's agenda. Um, one was related to annexation, um, in Portola Valley and one was related to reimbursement, um, the future reimbursement programs. These are the programs that, um, the, um, the district has. That allows the initial connector to, uh, sewer recoup costs. Um, so I've been communicating during the meeting with, um, the general manager to get a flavor of what was happening tonight. Um, it was very low attendance, he said maybe six to ten people total. So, um, I'm aware of a few folks in town who were interested in attending. Um, and I plan to talk to the general manager in the next few days, uh, more specifically, it does sound like. That there will be a working group on the reimbursement portion of this. Um, and at least initial impressions was that annexation, uh, was not as interesting to. To his board. The terminology that they use in the staff report, I think is worth exploring a little bit further. Uh, they say annexing certain parts of Portola Valley, I asked for a clarification, um, in a, in a letter that I sent earlier today. Um, on this and, and. From a practical matter, they mean the entire town, um, it's just the terminology that they use with, for, for this. Um, but I did share with the counselor earlier today, a letter that I, um, sent and it'll be in the, um, next. Guest for the community, just asking some questions and addressing high level issues. I also had a conversation with Howard today with the, um, executive director of the local agency formation commission or LAFCO, which. Is responsible for, uh, in this case, annexation issues between two. Um, unit, uh, two government bodies, the special district in the town, and that was very useful, just understanding some of the technical aspects of it, so we'll. Obviously be very engaged, uh, the general manager has agreed to have staff attend, um, the council's August eleventh meeting to. Share any information, ask, answer questions, the like. Uh, PG&E is going to start doing some of its, uh. Uh, normal right-of-way work in town over the coming, um, days, weeks and months. Um, we have had communications at the staff level and included the Conservation Committee and the Wildfire Preparedness Committee on. Um, opportunities to, um, consider not. Trimming trees and making them look ugly every year, and if they are real problem trees, go ahead and take them out. Um, so there's fifty trees or so that, um, that have been jointly identified for removal. Um, and PG&E is fine with it, our Conservation Committee Chair is fine with it, Wildfire Committee is obviously fine with it, staff's fine with it, so. Um, we'll put out some information, uh, starting tomorrow, just to have people expect that that work's going to be done, so they're not, um, surprised. Uh, I had, um, my first, uh, professional lunch in person with, uh, someone else in a long time. Um, with the general manager of Alpine Hill Swim and Tennis Club, uh, Jamie Blattman, um. Really enjoyed the conversation, I think the club is in very good hands. Um, and, um, I'm encouraged by his desire to have a, a positive working relationship like we had with Eric, um, prior. Um, I wanted to publicly congratulate a member of the, um, Portola Valley Library Staff, Catherine. Wutzawati, who's, uh, been here twenty years, so congratulations to her. That's quite an achievement, um, she's been a valuable member of their team and we've had plenty of positive interactions with her. And finally, a thank you from us, uh, today, I walked past the yard and saw her two brand-new used trucks and they look great. So thank you, counsel, for, uh, supporting Howard's latest, um, endeavors to. Um, bring those to his, his team and the public, that's my report, thank you.
Great, thanks. Counsel Digest for Thursday, June ten. All right, let's move on to the seventeenth, Counsel Digest for Thursday, June seventeen.
Uh, I just wanted to acknowledge the work that Bob Turcot has put in to, um, this investigation of Rena's. Method or A Bag's methodology on the Rena numbers and so on, and, um. If the council were to appoint a subcommittee to continue carrying this stuff forward, um, I appreciate Bob's offer to. Help us with those efforts.
Okay.
I'm sure we will take him up on that.
Wasn't there an A Bag general meeting, was there one today? Wasn't there an A-BAG general meeting? Was there one today? When is the?
Uh, it's tomorrow, tomorrow, Friday. It's this week.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Friday morning, yeah. So there's, there's a webinar starting at nine and then the general meeting is starting at ten thirty, I think, or something like that.
But it's public, right?
It's public, yeah.
So I mean, he could, he could check it out if he wanted.
Yeah, I, the Rena allocation stuff is, I think, not on the agenda much rather, because it's, it's, you know, it's kind of moved on from them at this point, other than obviously the appeal process. But yeah, and there may be, there may be big speakers there, but yes, that, that
It's always, it's always a good time.
Yeah. Um, the, the meeting though with a hundred and eleven delegates or whatever it is. Um, because there are two or three procedural votes that we need to do, including at the beginning, checking everybody in. Um, the, the business part of the meeting tends to be sitting around waiting for the roll call for most, better part of a couple hours. Um, but the
Virtual, right? This is not in person.
Virtually, yeah, yeah.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, those meetings are, they're, they're good in person, remote there. They tend to be much more focused on getting on with it because the votes take so long.
Yeah, absolutely. Alrighty, anything else? All right, then I think we are adjourned. Have a great time on your vacation.
Jeff was
Sorry, I um last uh June seventeenth, item three, we had actually already written a letter for, this is a, this was SB six twelve, which is a, a bill that's been sort of of interest to PNC Energy because it helps uh helps us, we believe, take better advantage of legacy uh utility contracts, particularly um uh PG&E's large hydro uh resources or small hydro resources, I should say. Um, we wrote a letter to it when it was going through Senate. We re, we wrote a, a second letter just uh to our assembly people because it's now over in the assembly. Um, I believe it's actually coming up for hearing uh next week. So um, just want to let you know, we, I, Jeremy and I put that together quickly. Um, it's the same letter. It's just basically the same thing we had, we had advocated for previously.
Okay. Right? Is there, is there anything else? Okay, then have a great vacation, John.
Thank you.
Another backpacking adventure, right?
Yeah, that's still two, couple weeks out.
Yeah, well, but we won't see you again.
That's right.
And you're going to be somewhere too, right, Craig?
Yes, I'm in Las Vegas celebrating my daughter's eighteenth birthday.
No way.
Wow.
Wow.
Hey, Mary Ann, I'm seeing my folks for the first time and my brother in two years over um, over the July fourth holiday, so I'll be gone about a week.
Great.
Alrighty.
Okay, everyone.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone.